Hello, I'm Catherine Pelanero, author of the book Absolute Madness. It is a true story of serial killer Joseph Christopher, race, and a city divided. These are Christopher's own words. "I went to a psychiatric center in Buffalo to be admitted. They said nothing was wrong with me." Joseph Christopher became known as the 22 caliber killer and the Midtown Slasher. He allegedly claimed eighteen victims during a savage four-month reign of terror across the state of New York. He targeted African-American males. In my book, I make the case that Christopher's crimes might have been prevented if he had received the psychiatric help he was seeking. Learning the story of Joseph Christopher and his innocent victims, we all have to ask ourselves what might have been different if we had adequate mental health care in this country. Quite possibly everything. The entire saga caused tremendous fear and pain that reached far beyond those directly involved. It also brought out the best and the worst in the community of Buffalo, New York, where I was raised. My father was a Buffalo police officer. The following reports were aired on WIVB-TV in Buffalo in 1980 and 81, and compiled by the station's retired senior correspondent Rich Newberg and former WIVB news photographer Tom Vetter.
It began here, Madison Avenue, between 40th and 41st Streets, 3:30 PM. A nineteen-year-old male black Hispanic stabbed once in the heart, dead.
Apparently, it all began as a robbery. At least, the victim's wallet was missing. The stabber was described as being male, white, about forty years of age, five foot seven, one hundred and forty pounds. He was described as wearing a blue cap, a blue ski jacket, and dark trousers. And, the most telling thing, wire-framed glasses.
Three blocks south, five avenues west, approximately one-half mile.
This time, 37th Street to 7th Avenue, in front of 500 7th Avenue. His victim, male, black, in his thirties. One plunge of the knife threw his outer clothing into the chest, into the heart, and the victim falls dead.
The stabber then moves north, again, about one-half mile, now into the Midtown Theater District.
Here, in front of 224 West 49th Street, the stabber strikes again. Again, one stab wound to the heart, the victim falls dead. The victim, male, black. This time, the stabber has changed his appearance at least. No longer wearing the blue cap or the blue ski jacket. Now identified as wearing a gray cap and a full-length gray, possibly tweed, overcoat. The one constant, those wire-framed glasses.
The stabber reverses his field now and heads back south to 33rd Street.
The stabber strikes again. His victim, once again, male, black. The victim, heavily dressed for the cold, cold weather. Nevertheless, the stabber is able to, with one slash of that knife, stab through all of his outer garments and plunge that knife into his chest cavity. The stabber runs away. The victim, seen staggering a few steps towards 7th Avenue, and then drops dead in the street.
A special task force of some thirty detectives fanned out over the twenty-block area this morning, questioning storekeepers and office workers, trying to compile a detailed description of the stabber.
He is either extremely strong or very skilled in his use of the knife. How would you say?
Or incredibly poor luck, in this instance. We don't know. The medical examiner is looking at that at the present time to tell us precisely how that was done.
Wendell Barnes had been waiting at this bus stop Tuesday morning. Shortly after 7:30, a white man he apparently did not know struggled with him briefly, stabbed him, and then ran. Barnes also ran, stumbling up Main Street to this McDonald's where he asked for help. Less than an hour later, he was dead. While city police responded immediately, they turned up few substantial clues. This morning, they were back again.
Covering the bus stops in the area, the businesses that were open, pedestrians that were on the street, questioning people, showing them the composite, trying to get additional information on our suspect and his activities after he committed the crime.
This morning's search yielded a few more witnesses, but apparently little in the way of constructive leads. Rochester Police have been pulling information with Buffalo and New York, which have had similar murders since last September. At this point, the strongest tie seems to be with a murder just two days ago in Buffalo. There and here, the time and location match, and there is some agreement as to the suspect.
While the two cases are similar, there are a number of possibilities that are equally plausible, and that is what makes solving this case so difficult.
Now, we talked yesterday afternoon to a detective on the Manhattan homicide squad in New York City. They have, over the past couple weeks, had a series of people assaulted and stabbed. They were stabbed, they were all black, they were stabbed by a white individual. No provocation at all between the suspect and the victims.
Similar crimes are not committed by the same person all the time. And so, when you do find similarities in crime, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the same person.
One of the main hopes of investigators at this stage is finding a witness to where the murder of Wendell Barnes ran. Again, he was last seen at the corner of Mortimer and St. Paul just after 7:30 Tuesday morning. If you might have seen such a man, police urge you to call either 428-7157 or 428-7158. Such information will be kept confidential. Wyatt Remus, News Eight.
The soldier indicted is Joseph Christopher, age twenty-five. He's the one in the center, second row of this picture. Last night, his mother and two Buffalo attorneys arrived in Columbus, Georgia. This morning, shortly before 10:00 AM, the three were allowed into the Fort Benning stockade to see Christopher. Yesterday, the attorneys told sources that they intended to fight extradition proceedings. Today, Assistant District Attorney John DeFrank of Erie County, New York, and New York State Police Investigator Michael O'Rourke issued an arrest order on the soldier. That's the first step towards his extradition to New York. Christopher and his mother and two attorneys met for well over an hour and a half today. Afterwards, attorney Mark Mahoney had this to say.
I can tell you that we have met with Joseph, and we've had a very productive meeting, and we're going to continue our investigation here for as much as we can for the remainder of the day.
What have you talked about?
Well, I can say he's fine. There's nothing more, really, I can say about the...
Let me ask you.
The key to Christopher's indictment was the testimony of two Fort Benning nurses, Captain Bernard Burgess and First Lieutenant Dorothy Anderson. They said Christopher had bragged to them about killing black men in Buffalo this fall. Some of those killings occurred only three weeks before Christopher enlisted and appeared in this group photograph. Others occurred during his Christmas vacation. From Fort Benning, Ben Fugit for Cable News Network.
Christopher's extradition hearing was held behind closed doors, orders of Judge John Land, and that wasn't all.
Not only was the extradition hearing closed here at the government center, but Superior Court Judge ordered all reporters and photographers off the tenth floor, the floor where that hearing was to take place. The local sheriff, Gene Hodge, told me that was highly unusual.
We would learn later Christopher did not even appear at the hearing, a decision made by his attorney, Kevin Dillon. Therese Christopher, his mother, was here to be with her son. Attorney Dillon told us he was happy with some things he learned in that hearing. He said he asked a lot of questions of State Police Investigator Sam Slade.
Relative to photographs that they introduced in evidence at the time of the proceeding, I generally questioned Mr. Slade concerning his knowledge of the identity of the person depicted in the photograph.
Investigators charged with the task of returning Christopher would not stop to answer reporters' questions about the man who has been the focus of attention since an Erie County grand jury indicted him on three counts of murder a week and a half ago. Marie Rice, News Four, Columbus, Georgia.
Under heavy guard, Christopher arrived. He was in the backseat, his face fully covered by what appeared to be a ski mask. He was sandwiched between Buffalo homicide chief Donovan and State Police Lieutenant Sam Slade. State Police Captain Williams and other key task force leader was driving. Security remained tight until Christopher was safely in the hands of Erie County Sheriff Kenneth Braun. An hour later, District Attorney Cosgrove told us he had advised Governor Carey of Christopher's safe return to Buffalo, and that Christopher would be held under extremely tight security.
The sheriff assures me that there will be no problem in securing the body and presence of Mr. Christopher, and I'll leave it at that.
Will there be a special 24-hour watch on?
It will certainly be done all by the sheriff that is necessary to make sure that the person of Mr. Christopher is safe.
Then the question of whether Christopher remains a major suspect in the New York City and Rochester killings.
First quarter of business of today was to make sure that we received a successful hearing at the hands of the Georgia authorities to secure the order of rendition, which we did. The second and most important priority was to return the man safely to Erie County, and I think we've accomplished that. I think that the person of Mr. Christopher, as in the case of all persons charged in the criminal community, they are all secured, they are all protected, their rights are
In mid-afternoon, we began the process of lineups begun and allowed by Judge Flynn's order. Approximately thirty witnesses were in a variety of lineups that had to be imminently fair. The lawyers on behalf of the accused, Mr. Christopher, were there. These witnesses came from the city of New York, Rochester, and Buffalo, city of Niagara Falls. We've just concluded them now. I'm pleased with the progress that the investigation has made. Our command post and the officers attached will continue to work away, and now I'm going to close the building and the command post because I've got something else I've got to do right now. So I'll see you all later.
Are there any more lineups scheduled?
No, that's the extent of my comment. Okay, we're going to go, and I'm going to kick you all out of the building because we've got other work to do.
We're closed for business for the day. The move by Mr. Christopher not to have you retained as his counsel.
Well, every defendant, no matter if the person is charged with murder in the second degree or harassment, has the absolute right to come into a courtroom and express his or her sentiments before the court. Mr. Christopher has chosen to do that today, and we respect his right to make those statements to the court, as I think you should.
Would you have a David this morning?
Will I try to change his mind? No, I won't try to change his mind, no.
Kevin, why did you object to the judge talking to you?
Certainly.
Why did you object to the judge talking to him?
There was a judgment decision made on my part in light of our application for an Article 730 examination as to competence.
Why did you ask for that examination?
Excuse me?
Why did you ask for that examination?
Based on our investigation, we felt that it was a proper application to make to the court.
Would you say your client was not in any mental condition to even stand for arraignment this morning?
As I stated two weeks ago, Marie, at no time will I discuss Mr. Christopher's physical abilities or inabilities with the press, and that continues today.
I think that Mr. Christopher is sane. He spoke with very deliberate control. His attorneys tried to keep him from talking. He spoke to the judge without any inhibition. His main point was, why am I here? He was saying, paraphrased, produce the evidence that you have against me. And based on that, he says that I'm not guilty for, in my understanding, that you have no evidence against me to connect me with these murders. Now, this was Mr. Christopher's point through that entire arraignment.
Reverend Smith, throughout, you've became a spokesman for the black community, feel forgiven for using that term, and raised the question several times about conspiracy as opposed to an individual or something like that. Do you feel that they've got their man?
Well, when you talk about conspiracy, I think they have one of the men, but we still know that there were more than one man that killed the black cab drivers. There is evidence that Mr. Christopher is also connected with the cab drivers' deaths. Where are his co-conspirators? Where are the men who assisted him in the death of Parley Edwards and Mr. Jones? Those men or that man is still loose.
You don't think that the case is still closed?
The case is not closed. There is evidence, circumstantial as it may be, that there were two or more men involved in the kill. The driver is one and the same. So if Mr. Christopher is being indicted for the killing of the 22 caliber killings, he also then is the number-one suspect in the killing of the cab drivers. It is an understanding that that was not done by one person. My concern and the concern of the black community is that there are others yet free that are to be apprehended in those two murders.
As far as Mr. Christopher is concerned, are you satisfied with what went on in court today?
I'm satisfied that Mr. Christopher is trying to get free representation at the cost of the taxpayer, and I don't think that that's right. I think that Mr. Christopher should underwrite the cost of his defense. He didn't want to talk to his mother. He never looked at her when he left the courtroom. He spoke very adamantly when the judge asked him, would he like to speak to his mother?
Context of white supremacy. Amen, Reverend Smith, amen. Gusty Renegade, in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's day, Thursday, July 21, 2022. So I have been told, the Catherine Massey Book Club at the cows. This is our 10th study session on Catherine Pelanero's Absolute Madness. In the week since we did our last study session, the Eastside Tops Buffalo Grocery Store reopened the Friday. We did our last book study on Thursday, and so the day after, the Tops store reopened. We talked about that on the compensatory call-in and with our white guest for the week, Dr. Jason Knight. Anywho, for this week, we're picking up Chapter 15. The audio segment that we just heard, that was compiled and put together on a Erie County, guess Buffalo, public library website with Rich Newberg, who's a retired reporter, journalist in Buffalo, and the author, Catherine Pelanero. That is the first time, we've been reading this book for over two months at this point, and that is the first time that we actually have heard from the author. Normally, when we are in the book club, I normally would include audio segments from the author way sooner, but with this project, since pretty much everyone, including myself, was ignorant about these events, I thought it would be way more beneficial to include as much archival material, Tony Brown and the other new segments, as possible early on, and then we could get to, because I do have audio of Catherine Pelanero, we could get to that later on. Plus, I knew this book was so long, we'd have ample time, but that's why we haven't heard from her sooner, but you did her at the beginning, and she did make a focus on white mental health. I'll put it that way. With that, we also heard segments with the New York victims. I would have included that sooner, but that audio literally just became available this month. It was posted literally just a few weeks ago, so I would have included it when we actually read the section about the murders in Manhattan, but it hadn't even been posted online at that time. I'm thankful that they did post it, and that's why I went ahead and included that as well, as I said, educational, since most of us are not familiar with these events anyway. The last thing, Reverend Smith, the audio segment at the end, brilliance all the way through. You heard him. What have you to say, Reverend Smith? Is he sane? Please. He is making conscious decisions about what he wants to do all throughout this process. This is not a crazy man, and he should pick up the tab for his own expense. Amen. Preach it, Reverend Smith. Get into audio segment one, context of white supremacy, the Catherine Massey Book Club. Absolute Madness, audio segment one.
Chapter 15. There is a firmly established right to self-representation under the Sixth Amendment. The right can be exercised by an individual, even when the exercise of the right is to his own detriment, Kevin Dillon wrote in a memo to Mark Mahoney. Their client's surprise announcement in court had forced Dillon to scrutinize legal rulings on the matter of self-representation. He prepared a detailed three-page memo with citations that ended with his conclusions on the issue. In sum, it appears to me that Christopher has an absolute right to represent himself. The court must conduct an examination to determine whether he understands the advantages and disadvantages and possible pitfalls of self-representation. If he is possessed of at least average intelligence, then his legal knowledge, or lack thereof, apparently becomes irrelevant. In other words, Dillon wrote, if he wants to screw himself, the Constitution will provide the lubrication. Their best option, of course, would be to persuade Christopher to change his mind and allow them to represent him. Whether this could be accomplished remained to be seen. If so, it seemed it would have to be Mahoney who did the persuading, since Christopher refused to speak to Kevin Dillon at all. He would not even acknowledge Dillon's presence when they were in the same room. He gave no explanation, except to say that he did not want to communicate with Kevin. Not that his communication with Mark Mahoney was much better. In the couple of times Mahoney had visited him at the holding center, he had found Christopher lying on his bed with a towel over his face. When Mahoney attempted to discuss incriminating statements Christopher had made in the Army, he had merely responded with, don't worry about that, I'll take care of it. Based on their own interaction with him and the limited information they had so far, Dillon and Mahoney had little doubt that Joseph Christopher had some mental instability, at the very least. Determining the extent of his apparent mental problems would be key, though this created another highly sensitive problem. Christopher balked at any suggestion that he might have mental issues. This may have accounted for why his attitude toward Dillon had suddenly gone from aloof silence to thinly veiled hostility. Christopher seemed to believe that Dillon was the sole source of instigation for Judge Green ordering a psychiatric exam. Before the attorneys could delve further into the question of Joseph's mental competence, or the prospect of him representing himself at trial, there were other pressing matters. Christopher had to appear in lineups at the district attorney's office on the afternoon of May 12. Twenty-seven witnesses, including seven from New York City and one from the Rochester slaying, were brought in for the lineups, which were held in the grand jury room. Deputies walked Christopher over via an underground tunnel that connected the Erie County Holding Center to the district attorney's office, located directly across the street on Delaware Avenue. Christopher again wore the ski mask, along with leg irons and manacles, all of which were removed for the actual witness viewings, of course. A total of six men were placed in the lineup. Along with Joseph Christopher were five decoys, which included two assistant DAs, two police academy recruits, and a recruit from the Coast Guard Academy named Edward Silvestrini. There were eighteen individual lineups. The process lasted more than five hours. Silvestrini, as a young cadet who had been told without explanation to immediately report to the district attorney's office, later said he felt that of all the men who participated in the lineups that day, Christopher appeared to be the least anxious. Over and over, they were instructed to change clothes and hats, don numbers, and parade in front of a closed room filled with dozens of law enforcement officers and revolving witnesses. I was nervous, Silvestrini recalled. You could feel the heavy atmosphere. It was definitely serious business. It went on and on. By the end, I was feeling exhausted, both from the tension and the time we'd spent. Christopher really seemed unfazed by the whole thing, which I thought was kind of amazing. I mean, I was just there as a decoy, and it had me on edge. I only remember him saying one thing the whole day. Lunch had been sent over from the holding center, and I remember him asking if he could have more cookies. Very polite and real casual about it, just asked for more cookies, as if we were at a picnic. Dennis Vako would one day serve as New York State Attorney General. On the day of the lineups, he was a twenty-eight-year-old assistant DA tasked with being a lineup decoy and reporting on the event to prosecutor Carl Cuker. Afterward, Vako gave his impression that Christopher's demeanor was of a cool and calculated individual with an aura of cockiness about him. His report noted that Christopher spoke very little, but Vako and fellow ADA Michael Stebick both related one particular exchange that stood out. About two hours in, Christopher and the stand-ins were instructed that during the next lineup, they would each be required to say, you fucking nigger. Christopher had raised his hand and said, excuse me, sir, but I don't swear. He then added, but I do say fuck. Five of the twenty-seven witnesses identified Joseph Christopher. Among the five were Albert Menefee and Calvin Crippen, the two men who had survived knife attacks in Buffalo on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, respectively. Ivan Frazier, who had been slashed on the Long Island Railroad on December 22nd, also picked out Christopher immediately. There's the son of a bitch, Frazier muttered when he spotted Christopher. A woman who witnessed the fatal stabbing of Luis Rodriguez in Manhattan also identified Christopher. The nurse who had interrupted the strangulation of Colin Cole in the hospital did not identify anyone, nor was anyone identified as the murderer of Wendell Barnes in Rochester. Witnesses to the 422 caliber shootings viewed the lineups. Of the Emmanuel Thomas murder, Frenchy Cook was the only one to identify a suspect. He picked assistant DA Michael Stebick. A witness to the Menefee stabbing also picked Stebick. Only one witness to the Harold Green murder identified a suspect from the lineups. He picked one of the police recruits. On the murder of Joseph McCoy in Niagara Falls, none of the observers made an identification. Three witnesses to the Glenn Dunn homicide were present, Madonna Gorni, Larry Robinson, and Kenny Paulson. Initially, only Madonna Gorni identified a suspect. She picked Joseph Christopher as the man she had seen sitting outside the Tops Market just prior to the shooting. Kenny Paulson, who had actually seen the shooter, did not identify anyone, not at first. John Reagan had made two more follow-up visits to Paulson since re-interviewing him on April 20th. He had asked him again if he knew Joseph Christopher. Paulson said no. Two of Paulson's older sisters had been present and said that they did know the Christoffers. Kenny did offer some new information, however. He now remembered seeing a white man sitting outside Tops that night before the shooting. He described him as a white male wearing wire-rimmed glasses and a dark hooded jacket. This sounded very much like the description given by Madonna Gorni of the man she had seen. Reagan visited Kenny again five days later, and this time, Kenny remembered that the person he'd seen sitting outside Tops had been dressed exactly like the shooter. He now gave a much more specific description. White male, seventeen to twenty-five years of age, light brown hair, clean shaven, wearing silver wire-rimmed glasses, a blue hooded sweatshirt, and jeans. The man's height was between five feet seven and five feet nine, and his weight, about one hundred sixty pounds. Kenny said the man had been sitting on the railroad ties with his hands in his pockets, staring straight ahead. When he'd first seen the man, Kenny said, the hood on the man's jacket had been down. When the man fled from Glenn Dunn's car, the jacket hood had been up. Kenny's memory seemed to have improved markedly. Reagan asked him if he'd be able to identify this person, and Kenny had replied that he could if he saw him in person. At the lineup, Kenny hadn't identified anyone. As Kenny exited, John Reagan met him in the hallway. Kenny, what happened? Reagan asked. Paulson hemmed and hawed. Reagan didn't push. Paulson left. He came back a few minutes later and told Reagan that after thinking a little more, he could identify someone after all. He gave Reagan the numbers that the man had been wearing in the two lineups he had viewed. They were the numbers worn by Joseph Christopher. A second grand jury was convened in an effort to secure additional indictments against Christopher. This time, the jurors heard from a variety of witnesses, including Rayford Ames, Christopher Corwin, Albert Menefee, Calvin Crippen, and Madonna Gorni. Kenny Paulson also testified, but now, he said, the shooter had blond hair. The ballistics evidence presented this time was stronger. Michael Dujanovich, ballistics technician at the Central Police Lab, had conducted a meticulous analytical comparison of evidence from the four crime scenes against items seized in the search warrants. Among those items were a 22 caliber cartridge and two fired cartridge cases, all exhibiting a wedge-shaped firing pin impression. One of the cartridges held a misfire. It had a firing impression on it, but the bullet was still seated in the cartridge case. A positive comparison was established between these three items and the five A positive comparison was established between these three items and the fired cartridge cases recovered from the Dunn, Green, and Thomas homicides. Bullet fragments from the McCoy murder had already been linked to the first three shootings. Dujanovich testified that this indicated the same firearm was used to fire, or attempt to fire, all of these components. Based on the examination of the markings on the recovered evidence, the most probable weapon was a Ruger Model ten-twenty-two rifle. Dujanovich had researched the firearm question extensively. He knew of no other weapon that would leave the combination of markings found. The Rotary magazine recovered at the Weber Street home had a Ruger logo. Dujanovich testified that he was not aware of any other firearm with a Rotary-type magazine of those specific dimensions. A superseding indictment was handed up on May twenty-eighth, recharging Christopher with the murders of Dunn, Green, and Thomas, and attempted murder of Albert Menefee and Calvin Crippen. Two days earlier, a Manhattan grand jury had indicted him for the murder of Luis Rodriguez and the slashing of Ivan Frazier. New York City delayed setting an arraignment date, as the grand jury there was still investigating any involvement Christopher may have had in the remaining Midtown Slasher cases. No indictment came from Rochester. Nothing had even been presented to a grand jury in that jurisdiction, as they had nothing to present. "Christopher had not mentioned Rochester in his confessions," a detective told reporters, "and they had reached a dead end in linking him to the murder of Wendell Barnes." The lineup witness had failed to identify him, and two Canadians who witnessed the stabbing had informed Rochester authorities that they were unable to identify Christopher from photos sent to them. Erie County wasted no time in scheduling an arraignment on the superseding indictment. Mark Mahoney accompanied Christopher to the downtown Buffalo courthouse on May twenty-ninth. As opposed to the arraignment two weeks prior, this second appearance was a routine proceeding that lasted ten minutes, with no surprise announcements from the accused. Mahoney entered pleas of not guilty to all charges. Judge William Flynn asked the defendant if he wished to have Kevin Dillon and Mark Mahoney represent him, and Christopher replied, "Yes, sir." It was Christopher's first court appearance without the ski mask. Reporters noted how little resemblance there was between Christopher and the composite sketches that had been circulated during the manhunt. Ed Cosgrove refused to comment on the matter. Some task force members pointed out to the press that Christopher had lost a great deal of weight since the killings last fall. The weight loss, however, did not explain the wide disparity between the facial features depicted in the twenty-two caliber killer composites and those of Joseph Christopher. Political cartoonist Tom Tolls drew renderings of the composite and the suspect placed side by side with the caption, "Helpful Clue of the Year Award Presented to the Multi-Million-Dollar Federal Suspect Sketch Program." A follow-up cartoon by Tolls titled, "The Prosecution Defends the Twenty-two Caliber Sketch," listed the various differences between sought and arrested, and ended with the observation, "Same sketch can be used equally well in any case for any suspect." Though few of the investigators commented publicly on it, the lack of resemblance between the sketches and Christopher were not lost on them. Some felt dismayed that the composites had turned out to be more hindrance than help. As Joe Cooley quips years afterward, "We were looking for a guy who looked like Jack Armstrong, and instead, he looks like Al Pacino." Investigators meanwhile scoured the land around the Ellington Cabin with metal detectors in search of the gun, to no avail. They continued interviewing Christopher's friends and acquaintances in an effort to further build their case, and either find the Ruger, or, in the absence of that, find out what became of it. There was also the prickly matter of whether Christopher had an accomplice. The GI from the stockade who had told police what Joe had said about having wasted blacks with a friend could not remember the name Joe had mentioned. Investigators asked him to undergo hypnosis in the hope of enhancing his memory, but he refused. Questioning of Christopher's known friends and associates had so far not produced any viable candidates. According to everyone police spoke to, in fact, Joe didn't appear to have been spending time with anyone around the time of the murders, despite what he had reportedly said to the soldier in the stockade about hanging out at a buddy's apartment, talking about survival training and nutrition, presumably in between killings. The prospect of an accomplice was all the more intriguing because of the wide discrepancy between certain witness descriptions of the gunman and the failure of some observers at the lineup, witnesses to the Niagara Falls shooting, for instance, to identify Christopher, or any of the decoys who looked similar to him as the shooter. If Christopher had indeed had an accomplice, perhaps a blond man, that could explain why bystanders at the different murders committed with one gun had described such different-looking men. It could also explain where the sawed-off Ruger could be found, perhaps in the possession of the accomplice. Determining whether a friend had aided Christopher, or even whether such a person actually existed, was problematic. The deeper they dug into the history of Joseph Christopher, particularly his recent past, the more contradictions, oddities of behavior, and outright lies, or fantasies, of Christopher they uncovered. If the accomplice did not exist, it wouldn't be the only relationship that was a figment of Joseph's imagination. Darrell Smith and John Sullivan had met Joseph Christopher on the day they entered the Army. Darrell and John, who were both from Cheektawaga, were friends who had enlisted together. An Army sergeant had to introduce them to Christopher on the morning they were sworn in. The sergeant said that Joe needed a ride to the airport, and Darrell was glad to help. When they got to his car, Darrell asked Joe if he wanted to go home first, since they had five hours before they had to catch the plane. Joe said no. Darrell introduced Joe to his family and invited him over to his house. Darrell's parents and sister had come for the swearing-in. Joe seemed to be the only guy who didn't have any family or friends there. Joe spent the afternoon at the home of the Smith family. Darrell recalled that Joe wasn't much of a talker. He didn't initiate any of the conversations. To Darrell, it seemed like he was in a trance most of the time. About the only time Joe would say anything was if Darrell or his dad asked him something. Joe said he was a carpenter and a mechanic. Darrell asked about his family, and Joe told him he had a wife and a four-year-old daughter. Darrell, John Sullivan, and Joe were housed in the same barracks at Fort Jackson, where they remained for seven days. Neither of them spoke with him much. Joe brushed aside questions about his family, and became evasive when he was asked about them. He mainly kept to himself and either read the Bible, which he would even read by flashlight after lights out, or Guns and Ammo magazine. Neither of them ever heard Christopher utter any racial remarks. They did recall one little hassle, where a black soldier had grabbed a magazine out of Joe's hand while he was reading. Joe jumped up and looked like he was going to punch the guy, but he didn't. He just told him not to mess around with his stuff. Joe had an old, beat-up, blue gym bag that he carried everywhere. He would never let go of it. He had it from the time they met him until they got to Fort Benning. Neither of them knew what Joe kept in the bag. He never put it down or opened it in their presence. Joe was even carrying the bag when they left Fort Jackson en route to Fort Benning. All the guys' duffel bags were piled on the ground, but Joe held his blue gym bag and kept walking continuously up and down among the duffel bags, smiling to himself. At Fort Benning, they had been in the same barracks, but Joe was in a different building. They pretty much only saw him in the mess hall, where Joe worked as a server, and just said hello. Darrell said he didn't talk to Joe much after Christmas leave, because Joe always appeared to ignore him when he did try to talk to him. Darrell and John had both traveled to Buffalo for the Christmas holidays, but neither had seen Joe on the trips to or from. Two weeks before leave, Darrell said Joe had told him he wasn't going home for Christmas. A couple days later, Joe said he was going to visit friends in New Jersey at Christmas. As for the stabbing at Fort Benning, neither Darrell nor John had witnessed it. They only saw Joe being put into the MP car. They'd heard that on the day before the stabbing, Joe had flipped out and started taking his clothes off in the mess hall line. Investigators showed Darrell and John all of the composite sketches. They both said that Joe didn't look like any of them, especially not the one depicting the perpetrator in the Niagara Falls homicide. John Reagan interviewed a young lady named Grace, who was a friend of Joe's sister, Lorraine. Grace was the same age as Joe, and had known him since they were both fifteen. Grace had dated Joe casually in the year prior to him joining the service. At least Grace had considered it casual. She had therefore been taken completely by surprise when Joe had proposed to her the previous summer. "She and Joe had been going to the movies a lot," she said, "mainly at the Como Mall." This prompted Reagan to ask if they had ever eaten at the Burger King across the street. That was where the Harold Green murder had occurred, but Grace said no. She described Joe as all of his other friends had: "A quiet man who was never hostile to anybody, and liked hunting and working on cars. Very close to his father, had taken his death very hard, and visited the grave almost daily." As for what Joe wanted out of life, he had told her he wanted to get a good job, settle down, and live in the country. One day, the previous August, he had asked her to go for a ride. He drove to a park, and asked her to get out and walk, which she did. They sat down under a tree, and he asked her to marry him. She told him no. Grace emphasized what a total surprise this had been. She had always considered their relationship more brother-sister than anything else, nothing serious at all. She'd been dating someone else at the time, too. Asked about Christopher's reaction, she said she didn't think he took it badly. He asked if they could still be friends. The last time she saw Joe was in October. They'd gone to see the movie Kramer versus Kramer. Grace had heard that Joe was coming home for Christmas, and she told his sister Lorraine that she'd like to see him, but Lorraine said he didn't want to see her. Grace and Joe had exchanged a couple of letters while he was in the Army. Joe never told his family that he proposed to Grace. In his waning days in the Army, however, he had written a letter on the subject of marriage to the elderly Bianquis. After his legal troubles were straightened out, he wrote, "He would like to be married." He wrote that he had asked Grace to marry him, that she was the best he knew, and she'd always been special with him, but claimed there was another girl who had his child. He gave her name. He thought the Bianquis might be related to her. He wanted their help, because in Italian families, he knew marriages are sometimes arranged. He promised to give love and respect if anybody would marry him. "Kindness was easy for him to give," he wrote. "He wanted to take care of his child." As far as anyone knew, the girl did not exist. Teresa Christopher and her daughters had been subpoenaed to appear before the second grand jury. The Buffalo Evening News quoted a source as saying that the family would be questioned as part of a mechanical and methodical probe into Joseph's background. This raised some unsettled legal questions on state laws concerning family confidentiality privileges. Prosecutors, sources told the news, would have to be careful in eliciting information from Christopher's relatives. Carl Kueker handled the questioning of Joseph's mother and sisters. Legal matters aside, the family had no knowledge of Joe being involved in any of the crimes, and found it impossible to believe that he could be. They had little to offer about Joe's activities while he was home on Christmas leave. Teresa and her son-in-law had picked him up at the bus station on Christmas Day. The week in between had been ordinary. Teresa said that Joe had mostly just stayed around the house and slept on the couch a good portion of the time. He'd soaked his feet a lot, because they had blisters that were hurting him badly. The only day during the Christmas holidays that stood out in memory for Teresa and her daughters was New Year's Eve. Teresa and Sofia had spent the afternoon shopping at various stores, and Joe had driven them around. After dropping Sofia off at her home around three-thirty PM, Teresa and Joe had returned home themselves. Joe had stayed at the house until around nine PM, when one of Teresa's sisters had picked them up for a family gathering. Asked what Joe had been wearing that evening, Teresa recalled that he wore a beret, jeans, and a sweater with a light jacket. Carl Kueker questioned Teresa about the letter she had written to Joe's commanding officer in the Army. "You indicated that based on your experience in a psychiatric hospital at Gowanda State, that you had an opinion that perhaps Joseph has become a manic-depressive schizophrenic. Is that correct?"
"Yes."
"Could you perhaps maybe just enlighten this grand jury as to what you meant by that?"
"Schizophrenic is a person with two different personalities," Teresa said. "Manic-depressive, he is temperamental at times and depressed at times."
"When you say temperamental, would you say he had a temper?"
"Not a severe temper, no."
"When you indicated that he was schizophrenic, which you defined as having a split personality, I'm trying to find out what you meant. What two personalities you observed in him during this time period of nineteen eighty before he went into the service?"
"I didn't think he was that way before he went into the service. I thought he was depressed," Teresa answered. "But, until this incident happens down there, I thought he's not thinking right anymore. I knew he was depressed at home, but I believed it was because he wasn't able to get a good paying job, and he... He tried several different jobs. He would give me money that he earned just doing extra work for people whenever he could. But, after he started this starvation diet business, he said that after a few days he felt really good, and that his thinking was clearer." "And Army food. He thought there was something in it that, you know, it would just cause him to feel uncomfortable and bloated. And he would go off jogging by himself, and he'd go for sometimes six days without eating, just drinking fluids. And I told him that this was a dangerous thing to do, that it changed the blood chemistry, and sometimes his reactions, and even his thinking would be... Wouldn't be normal. If he insisted on starving like that." "He had lost quite a considerable amount of weight in the first month or so. He had gone from a hundred and fifty-two to a hundred and ten pounds, which was, to me, too severe. And I thought if he wasn't eating right, he wasn't thinking right."
Kueker inquired if Teresa had told Joseph about what had transpired in Buffalo when she went to see him in Georgia.
"No, I didn't say what happened. I just told him that we all loved him and he was worried about. He was very... He had been in the hospital. He told me he felt that he was being drugged, that he felt dopey. He couldn't put two sentences together. He was given a letter. It took him almost ten minutes to get it open and read it. Very catatonic. The second time I visited him, he was in a different jail, and he was much brighter, much more responsive."
"You never discussed with him the events that occurred in Buffalo, which he was being accused of or charged with?"
"No," Teresa answered. "He apologized for all the trouble that was going on."
The family had visited Joe at the holding center since his return to Buffalo. The grand jury could not explore the nature of their conversations because of family confidentiality privileges. Their visits with Joe, however, had not included any talk about the charges against him, and were revealing only of his distraught state of mind. Joe was terribly worried about the effects that all of this was having on his family. They assured him of their love and support. His sister Lorraine had tried her best to comfort and cheer him during her visit to the jail. They talked mostly of family matters. Lorraine tried to make him laugh. Joe cried for much of the time. They said the rosary together. Donna Van Olden had accompanied Mrs. Christopher on a visit to the holding center. Joe had not said much. Donna didn't know what to say beyond the customary, "How are you doing?" She blurted something about how she never thought in a million years she'd ever see him in jail. He gave her a sad little smile through the mesh wire that separated them. Teresa had accepted the painfully obvious fact that her son was seriously mentally ill. She still could not conceive of him being a murderer, particularly not the racist assassin who was being portrayed in the press. Everyone who knew Joe found this absolutely impossible to believe, none more so than his black friends and coworkers, none of whom were called to testify. Grand jury proceedings are the domain of prosecutors. The accused is not permitted to call witnesses, nor are their attorneys allowed to be present during testimony. Charles Walker had worked with Joe and Ernie Smith on the maintenance crew at Canisius. Charles and Ernie had grown up in the section of the east side known as the Fruit Belt. Charles still lived on Grape Street and was also a good friend of one of Parler Edwards's sons. Like everyone else in the city, Charles had been well aware of the attacks on black men that had paralyzed the community the previous fall and winter. He had been one of a group of African-American men who had helped form a neighborhood watch to assure that people traveled in pairs and stayed safe during the killing spree. And, of course, he heard the news of the arrest and indictment of a suspect. Hearing the name Joseph Christopher had not rung a bell with Charles. It had not registered with him at all, in fact, until he happened to see a photo in the newspaper of the unmasked suspect, a photograph in which the man was pictured wearing glasses. He had looked closer and finally said to himself, "Oh my God, that's Joey." As Charles Walker would later recall, "I ran down to the bus stop and waited for Ernie. He got off the bus, and as soon as he saw me, we pointed at each other and we both said, 'Joey.'" We just couldn't believe it. We could not believe that was our Joey. The three of them had been good friends at Canisius. Ernie and Joe had been particularly tight. In addition to Ernie and Charles, there were several black men on the maintenance crew. As Charles recalled, "Everybody liked Joey. He was crazy, but I mean in a fun way, a real jokester. Witty, always laughing, just a crazy white boy. He was always cool with us. He was a lot of fun, and we had a good time. We would have to clear the parking lot during snowstorms and Joey drove the big plow. We'd go out there and throw snowballs at each other, just doing what guys do. Joey popped pills all the time. I don't know what they were, but he'd be flying, acting silly. Me, him, and Ernie, we'd go grab something for lunch. We'd go out to his pickup truck and he'd pop a pill. He offered some to us, but we said, 'No, thanks.' We were like, 'You're crazy, Joe.' He'd just laugh. He took us out to his cabin a couple times. It'd be the three of us and we'd hang out, talk, have a few beers. He showed us his guns and his hunting gear. He invited us to go hunting, but it wasn't my thing. I told him I'd take some venison, though. I bought a house during the time we worked together, and I remember him helping me out, giving me a lot of tips on some plumbing and home improvement work I had to do. He knew his stuff. I never detected a prejudiced bone in his body. The three of us were like brothers. We could never wrap our heads around what they were saying about him being this racist killer. It was like they must be talking about some other guy." Charles thought about his friend in later years, but still had no answer for how he could have become the infamous killer. The only thing I could ever come up with was that it must have been a combination of the drugs he was taking and possibly being bullied. I could see him being bullied because Joey wasn't a tough guy. Ernie and I would tell him stories about growing up in the Fruit Belt, the school of hard knocks, and he was mesmerized. Joey was a really nice guy, and like I said, not a real tough guy. And sometimes nice guys bear the brunt of being ridiculed and bullied. Unfortunately, some people take kindness as a sign of weakness, in spite of what went on with him. I remember him as a nice guy. Police spoke with Louis, Joe's fishing buddy, who told them that he and Joe used to meet for coffee all the time at Costanzo's Bakery. Leonard Holmes had been Joe's boss at an auto repair shop in nineteen seventy-nine. Both Louis and Leonard were African-American. Both, said Joe, had never shown any signs of racism. They spoke with his supervisors at Canisius, in addition to guys, both black and white, who had either worked with or dealt with him. They heard the same thing over and over. Joe was not a racist. Joe was not hostile. The maintenance supervisor at Canisius who had fired Joe told investigators that Joe hadn't even raised a fuss when he was let go. Other than the instances of sleeping on the night shift, the offense that led to his dismissal, Joe had been a great employee. Reporters had the same experience. Joe's friends and acquaintances, black and white, defended him. Donna Van Alden spoke with a reporter on the condition of anonymity. He was a sensitive, compassionate individual. I didn't consider him to be a loner because he had an outgoing personality and was easy to get along with. She mentioned how she had laughed at the idea of Joe being a suspect when the police had first come to question her. The whole thing is ridiculous, and I'm apprehensive because mistakes have been made in the past where the wrong person has been accused of something. Members of the Bisonite Pistol and Rifle Club echoed the disbelief of Joe as a murderer. One of the club founders said, "He was a good instructor. He was good on the range, and he was very safety-conscious. He wasn't a troublemaker, and he was a good worker." The only account of questionable behavior from Joe came from gun club member John Hemphill, a black man, who told Bob Keeler of Newsday, "When I first met him, he seemed like the typical timid kid. He was a nice kid, and he was trying to learn to shoot well." Hemphill had spent time on the range with Joe, helping him perfect his skills. According to Hemphill, Joe had even brought in a Ruger twenty-two caliber rifle and asked him to help zero it in, to make it more accurate. As time went on, he noted that Joe had a temper. He had a short fuse. When he couldn't get it, shooting like he wanted it, he would slam the gun down. I used to try to calm him down. Hemphill referred to Joe as "just gun-happy" and said he had a phobia about someone in his family taking his father's guns. Joe had wanted to be gun club president, he said, and was a little upset when Hemphill got the position instead. Ernie Smith spoke of his friendship with Joe to a New York Times reporter. The only thing Ernie could recall Joe ever saying that even touched on race was that he had once been ripped off by some blacks when he was a boy. Ernie said, "He never seemed to have any strong feelings about race. If he did these killings, something has to have come over him lately." Unknown to police or press were two individuals who'd had encounters with Joe during the time of the killings that left them easily believing he was the murderer. Bobby Grott, the young boy who sat on a bench next to the stranger who told him his name was J.C., like Jesus Christ, recognized Joe Christopher instantly when he saw him on the TV news. Bobby told his parents about the incident, that the guy they kept showing on TV was the stranger who told him that bricks were for throwing at niggers. Kim Edmiston also recognized Christopher as the crazy man who had chased and assaulted her in the predawn hours of New Year's Day, nineteen eighty-one. As she later said, "I was dumbfounded when I saw him on TV. I said right away, 'Oh my God, that's him.' I had gotten a long and very close look at his face when he held me against the door, and there was no doubt in my mind it was the same guy. That was the moment I realized who I was dealing with that night, and I felt more lucky to be alive than I ever had at that particular time in my life. I thought about calling the police, but then I thought better of it. No way did I want to be involved in that media and legal circus that was playing out on TV and in the newspapers. I was just so relieved that my attacker was caught. I didn't really care who he was or exactly how he would be dealt with, just that he would be. And for far worse crimes than his assault on me." Decades afterward, Kim was able to describe what Christopher had been wearing that night, details that had only been divulged in sealed testimony. Memory of the encounter remained with her in vivid detail. Seeing those rapid frozen breasts in the air when I was walking to my apartment was one of the most terror-filled moments of my life. I felt foolish and overconfident for going back there, and I knew no matter which way I went, either back to the car or to the house, that he was close enough to catch me. I didn't know if I was going to be robbed or raped or what, but I knew at that moment that he had waited there for me to come back, which was very horror movie-style horrific and terrifying to me. I also felt foolish for underestimating him based on his physical size. When I first saw him jogging down the street, I assumed he was a young teen because of his slight size, and I didn't perceive him as being a big threat, just an oddity at four AM in the freezing cold. But once he charged me and slammed me against the front door, I realized he had a lot of physical power and a ton of grown-up bad intent. I also felt like him coming after me was impulsive. Like, I wasn't really what he was looking for, but I was this opportunity that came along, and he just reacted. The cops thought I was nuts when I told them he was marching and doing all these military-type moves. It made a little more sense when I heard he was in the Army. I mean, as much as any of it could make sense, the way he acted through the whole thing was just beyond strange, like he was playing this weird game that only he knew about."
Alrighty, context of white supremacy. That is audio segment number one. We are still in chapter fifteen of Catherine Pelanero's Absolute Madness. If you have commentary, questions, to share, the number seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred, decode five six four nine four three pound, press star six one if you would like to participate. The number again, seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred, decode five six four nine four three pound, press star six one if you would like to participate. We will read your commentary on the air. In fact, we will start with one of the folks who wrote in, and then we'll get the other folks as we proceed. So one person wrote in. They said, "Peace, Gus, as you introduced the eighth session, we're on number ten today. For Absolute Madness, you asked these questions. Has this been worthy of your time and energy? Is this important enough for Gus to bring up every time we talk to these white guests about the history of Buffalo? Did so again this week. And last, how important is this subject matter?" I asked that question on social media today. Yes, this has been worth the time and energy. Yes, this is important enough to bring up with the white guests from Buffalo, and yes, this is extremely important. I've concluded that this is important and leads me further to believe our confusion deals significantly with our collective memory. It seems that when we have more of this memory intact, we have context to understand our reality and a prime way white supremacists maintain power. I believe it is to erode context in every way. That is a main point of Neil Postman's book, Amusing Ourselves to Death to Erode Context So That You Don't Have Meaning. He continues, "This also speaks to the power of reading, where we can remember in detail. I also notice that we tend to remember things as abstractions more than people, places, or things, but with the detail we get from reading, they are much more real. This details with how we remember our ancestors as well as we deal with white atrocities. The idea of generational trauma you brought up made me think of how I would ask my grandparents, born around nineteen forty-three, but they would act as if nothing ever happened. For context, this is in Decatur, Illinois, birthplace of James Lowen, duh-duh-duh, who had a lot more to say. I asked my father about the Atlanta murders, child murders so-called, and he knew of them, but not how they are currently referred to as the Atlanta Child Murders. Wow." Now that's, that's, I said there, too, you have a lot of us, we'll know of the Atlanta case, but we won't really know a lot of details about that either. I said his, uh, father, grandfather? Father. His father did not know about Joseph V. Christopher. Nobody does. A few notes on the text itself. The true crime doesn't seem to have the quality of journalism I thought it would have. Pelanero seems just as biased in the way she presents information as Jeffrey Toobin, uh, I'll rinse out James. It seems like one big case of defending Christopher. Number two, this book really shows the cognitive operations going on in racist men and women's brain computers, the way the white people acted during the actual murders, how Pelanero writes, and even how Matt Greider referred to Glenn Dunn as a "man." All bring much more to my awareness of the psychopathic racial personality as written by the late, great Dr. Bobby E. Wright. Very important point as well. Okay, Matt Greider, when he was on the program, he consistently referred to fourteen-year-old Glenn Dunn, "Yeah, he was a big, you know, hulking man and..." Number three, in this case, it seems like not all the information is being revealed. The idea that of Christopher having racist attitudes and behavior just being random is preposterous. The most that was brought up was his father. Years ago, I was in a tragic arrangement, cowbell, and I would notice that the, that while the white male was very open with their racism, the white females, even if they weren't smart, would be silent and practice racism, white supremacy in other ways. I suspect Christopher's family conducted themselves in the same manner. Keep that in mind with Therese Christopher. I listen on the plantation with earbuds and will email if I can contribute further. Thanks. Replace white supremacy with justice. That is the plan. Alrighty, star six one for folks who dialed in with commentary, and I'll get to the other emails as well. I'll share a few of my notes, get in our email, and then double-check, see if folks dialed in have thoughts, observations, questions. Let's see, have to flip, oh, 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 flip back in chapter fifteen to get some of my notes. I, I almost had to, to pause. I said, "Ernie Smith, he's such a prominent figure in the second portion of the book." So I'm kind of having to pick whether or not I want to bring up what Matt Greider had to write about him or save it for later. Anyway. Beginning of chapter fifteen, we start the metaphors. So they start with Kevin Dillon. Matt Mahoney, Kevin Dillon says, they're talking about if Joey is gonna waive his right to defense, represent himself, ala Tupac Shakur's mother, Dr. Asada Shakur Davis, says if he is possessed of at least average intelligence, then his legal knowledge, or lack thereof, apparently doesn't, becomes irrelevant. In other words, Dillon wrote, "If he wants to screw himself, the Constitution will provide the lubrication." Quite a metaphor, especially with all of the homoeroticism and everything that's already in this text. Eh, metaphors, continues. It talks about, so they're going through the process, they got the indictment and what have you, and so they're gonna do the whole grand jury. We have a true bill, proceed with the hearing or toss this. And they say they take him through an underground tunnel to avoid some of the press and what have you. And I said, "Man, race soldiers, they have so many, so many of these, like, underground tunnels and secret passages and houses and other institutions that you would never know about." I'm told, like, Washington DC is also one of those areas with lots of underground tunnels. I think New York City is another one, but just lots of different things that you would not know unless you are classified as white, and then even then, more informed. Let's see, next, she emphasizes that when they, so they take him underground with the leg irons and the manacles, the ski masks, like he's some sort of slave or what have you. Should do, you know. Should do, you know, suspected serial killer at this point. They say they were removed for the actual witnesses, witness viewings, of course. And I thought, "Wow." I don't know, does that happen? Do they have times where the niggers accused of rape and everything else, where they are shackled and manacled and they still get dragged out, even though they're supposed to be presumed innocent? I was thinking of Eldridge, excuse me, not Eldridge Cleaver. Bobby Seale, think he was one of, in one of the many, many Panther trials where they had him gagged and shackled and chained to a chair in the courtroom and what have you, even though he had not been convicted. Continues, "A total of six men were placed in the lineup, along with Joseph Christopher, were five decoys, which included two assistant DAs, two police academy recruits, and a recruit from the Coast Guard Academy named Edward Silverstreamy." Now, this immediately reminded me of Anthony Broadwater, 'cause I said, "Ooh, wee. Why with this lineup, Joey is not, oh, we just go grab some other convicts or suspected convicts and all the rest? They go get other police officers and what have you, white presumably, to do the line? Why couldn't they do that with Anthony Broadwater? So, there's never an opportunity to say, "Hey, he pulled the old double whammy slickeroo knee, being slippery like Gus, got his homie to come in here and give us the, hmm, evil eye and get us all tricked and discombobulated and everything." What, you know? Why couldn't they do the same thing with Mr. Broadwater? Same state, same year. They continue. So, they said, "Silverstreamy commented, 'Of all the men who participated in the lineups that day, Christopher appeared to be the least anxious. Lunch had been sent over from the holding center, and I remember him asking if he could have more cookies.'" Very polite and real, casual about it, just to ask for more cookies, as if we were at a picnic. They said that Jeffrey Dahmer, cool, unflappable, ice in the veins, as they say. And you just, you got, got any more of them cookies? Fetal thing, man, watch his sugar intake. They continue, they say, "Afterwards, Vako gave his impression that Christopher's demeanor was of a cool and calculated individual with the aura of cockiness about him." Interesting descriptor as well, especially since masculinity, and again, all that homoeroticism that has come, been throughout this text. Continues, says, "Vako and fellow district attorney Michael Stebeck both related one particular exchange that stood out. About two hours in, Christopher and the stand-ins were instructed that during the next lineup, they would each be required to say, 'You fucking nigger.'" Christopher had raised his hand and said, "Excuse me, sir, but I don't swear." He then added, "But I do say fuck." Now, I don't know why that stood out to them, maybe everybody else just, you know, "What's the line? Okay, fucking nigger, no big deal." He makes a point of saying something about that, but to him, the swear is "nigga." Now, to me, that is interesting. Would you rate it here? So, for me, it would be F-word? I don't say N-word. Hey, too much of that sanitizing going on for exactly reasons like this. Let me get exactly what he says, so it's no confusion, and then we can evaluate. "Nigga is profane to him, not the F-word." Hmm. Now, if they could have, why, why is nigga profane? Why do you consider nigga profane but not the F-word? Maybe you can't question at the lineup procedure. Now, they continue, "Good old Madonna Gorney." Now, again, this is the white woman who forgot to identify Joey to enforcement officers the night that fourteen-year-old Glenn Dunn was killed at the Tops Grocery Store, and acknowledged that she felt unsafe. "I'm an old white woman with all these niggers, yee." And that she felt better once a white face, "Woo, I felt a little bit better." You know, she says, "Oh, man, he's a dopey white guy. He probably won't even be able to help." But at least one white face, "Woo, a little bit safer." Says that Madonna Gorney identified a suspect. She picked Joseph Christopher as the man she had been sitting outside the Tops Market just prior to the shooting. Good old Kenny Paulson, who had actually seen the shooter, did not identify anyone, not at first. Now, this is the fellow who lied to the police. That's what they concluded. This guy's lying. He just doesn't want to identify a white person. Uh, let's see. And then they continue and go through all this, and now Kenny is all this detail. Hundred sixty pounds, five feet seven, five feet nine, blue hooded sweatshirt, jeans, wire-rimmed glasses, like, whoa. How did you, what? What's going on, Mr. Paulson? He says, "Kenny, what happened?" Paulson hemmed and hawed. Now, even, what? You said before, you didn't know who the guy was, you didn't see, "Oh, I don't know, might have been O.J. Simpson, I don't know." Now, you got all this detail. What's going on? "Oh, I, I don't know." Mm-hmm. Old racist Kenny Paulson here, we got a murder of a fourteen-year-old, and you're hemming and hawing to police, obstruction of justice. That should be a charge, in my opinion. Let's see, after his hemming and hawing, he said, "Paulson came back a few minutes later and told Reagan that after thinking a little more, he could identify someone." After all, he gave Reagan the numbers that the man had been wearing in the two lineups he had viewed. They were the numbers worn by Joseph G. Christopher. Now, again, if he had a, Glenn Dunn was the first person killed. If Paulson tells them immediately, bang, this is old Joey. A whole lot of black people still be, like, Parler Edwards, Ernest Shorty Jones, Joseph McCoy, Ivan, Louis Rodriguez, Ivan Frazier, Roger Adams. How many black people? Wendell Barnes? How many black people, how many black males would still be alive? Can't he just snitch, man? And again, they have the audacity to come and say that it's us, that this is negro culture. You don't snitch, you all don't cooperate with enforcement officers. No, consistently, white people don't snitch, whether it's not snitching on Joseph Christopher. Hey, some of the folks said that with Peyton Gindren and some of these folks, that they were aware of what this fellow was gonna do even thirty minutes or so before all this went down. Even the day-to-day racism that's not outright killing and slaughtering black people immediately, acutely, white people don't snitch then either. We can't even get a white person to give up a racist joke on the program generally. Man, I'm gonna pause before I get this note, just to read different listeners' commentary. Now, they shared this a long time back, weeks back, and I didn't share it because I said, "Ooh, this is gonna come up, like, acutely later on as we get to the trial aspect of the case." Let's see, if I can, oh, there we go. Let's see, there we go. Alright, so this person wrote in. "The posts of the sketches clearly are not the same people. It makes one wonder how many black males are in prison for this very reason." And saying that they have, I posted different, some of the reports where it has sketches, composites, right, of the drawings the police had, and you just heard them talking about that in the text, I'll read the portion, but listeners had been saying all along, like, "Wow, these sketches are horrible, and it even looks like they have sketches of different people for some of these killings, and none of these look like Joseph G. Christopher." Now, the book, it says, "Christopher's first court appearance, no ski mask. Reporters noted how little resemblance there was between Christopher and the composite sketches that had been circulated during the manhunt. Ed Cosgrove refused to comment on the matter. Some task force members pointed out to the press that Christopher had lost a great deal of weight since the killings last fall. The weight loss, however, did not explain the wide disparity between the facial features depicted in the twenty-two caliber killer composites and those of Joseph Christopher." And then she talks about some of the political cartoons that kind of maligned all of this. Hopefully, I'll be able to post those images, too. But, I mean, it is, I don't know what to, one, we can talk about the racism, the sloppiness of the photos, perhaps, people like Kenny Paulson being racist and not giving accurate information about the suspect, it's lots of things. Also, Joseph G. Christopher's appearance varies drastically, more so than I can say for really any, we've done a lot of different crime books and events and what have you. I mean, and over a short period, I mean, with any person, you expect some variance with age and that sort of thing. If we're looking over, like, a twenty-year period, that sort of thing. We're talking over just like a two, three-year period. It is extraordinary, the weight fluctuation, the hair change. I mean, yes, most of the time, he has glasses on, but then sometimes he doesn't. He looks about like five, six different people. By the time you factor in, sometimes it's a fifty-degree swing in weight. They let him get all the cookies he wants, or he's fasting 'cause he thinks they've poisoned the food, in terms of where his weight is, and then where his hair is and everything else. It is astounding just how many different versions of Joseph G. Christopher you see over a relatively short period of time. Anywho, continuing. "There was also the prickly matter of whether Christopher had an accomplice, the GI from the Stockade, who had told police what Joe had said about having wasted blacks with a friend, could not remember the name Joe had mentioned." Again, we got a white person who, "Oh, I don't, I just can't recall." "Investigators asked him to undergo hypnosis in hope of enhancing his memory. He refused." And then they get into these, the wide variance in the composites. Is that because more than one person was involved, and so witnesses are seeing different people? Is he helping maybe with the confiscation of evidence? It would be easier if you're gonna kill somebody and then extract the heart. It would be easier if you have two people to do? We asked Matt Greider about all this, he was very confident. No. I said, "Joey was a loner, didn't have any friends, he didn't have any homies around this time, they couldn't find any evidence of him being with anybody, that it was just him, he didn't have any help." We can think about, you heard Reverend Smith at the beginning, too, he talked about that, said, "Hey, we think more than one person accomplices, he was involved, we think he had help." Uh, let's see. Anything else? So, they get this parade of black people, and this, you could do this at any era of white supremacy racism, even back on the plantation, you could go and get black people, and, man, Massa Thomas was the kindliest, nicest white man ever. He gave us extra chitlins every Christmas, extra satchel of oranges, extra can of molasses, like, you can, any era, you can find victims of white supremacy who will testify that this white person is not racist, they are cool. Grady Lewis, two-hour conversation with Peyton Gindren. Doesn't surprise me at all, think about that, again, when we ask now, who is more confused about what white supremacy racism is and how it works? So, they go to talk to some of Joey's coworkers, in addition to Ernie Smith, black people, and so Darrell Smith, I don't know, was he related to Ernie, I wonder? Anyway, Smith is a common last name. John Sullivan goes to talk to them. Neither of them ever heard Christopher utter any racial remarks. They did recall one little hassle where a black soldier had grabbed a magazine out of Joe's hand while he was reading. Joe jumped up like he was going to punch the guy, but he didn't, he just told him not to mess around with his stuff. Now, maybe he didn't assault him there, and they don't think this is racist? I'm just looking at the pattern where all of the people Joe did assault or was prepared to physically assault while he was in the Army, Fort Benning, Georgia, black people, non-white people. Now, again, when you're less confused, you don't see a pattern like that. So, my man Darrell, John Sullivan, they're there, they're in the base, right, with Joey, they're seeing these assaults and what have you, and, "Oh, man, remember, he was about to deck him that day, and, oh, he stabbed the guy that day, and..." You just don't put all that, like, "Wait a minute, has he stabbed any white people? You remember Joey? Has he, did he stab any white people? No? Okay. Hmm. Has he punched or attacked any? No? Just, just the dark people, huh? Continues, let's see. His family, they don't, they also, so, nobody, the black people that, "Oh, he can't be a racist." What do you mean? The white people, "He can't be a racist? What do you mean?" Say Grace emphasized what a total surprise this had been. She had always considered their relationship, this is after proposal, more brother-sister than anything. Now, I even had to pause with all this. So, the one girlfriend from before, nine years older than Joey, he's like twenty-two or so, and she's almost thirty, when they're dating. Now, I said then, like, that's, for me, asterisk. If they were thirty-nine and thirty, forty-nine and forty, who cares? Have fun, blah, blah, blah. We just said yesterday, your brain computer is still developing at twenty. If he was twenty, she can go to a bar, rent a car, liquor, go to the dispensary. Joey, if he was twenty, he can't. By law, they say, there's a difference. There's a massive difference between twenty and twenty-nine. That right there is on the kind of, saying, we were saying before, like, was he sexually abused before? And if so, is that kind of continuing this pattern? And then here, where she thinks, "We're like brother and sister. Are you all having sexual intercourse? So, is this a brother-sister thing, or is this, we're like friends with benefit? Like, what is going on? What type of boundaries does he have in his sexual activity?" And then again, I keep coming back to, now, is he really, is he attracted to these females? If you are in these type of relationships where it's not that serious, anyway, she's twenty and twenty, I'm twenty, she's twenty-nine, so, I mean, this isn't that serious, anyway. Brother-sister, this isn't that serious, anyway. I'm really interested and serious sexually about Ernie, that's why we fool around. I even thought we were gonna get it again, with some of his coworkers, just, "Oh, we, we used to, you know, just go and have fun in the parking lot and throw snowballs and all that." Let's see what they say, we'll get to that part, let's see. They continue, let's see. Oh, they start to get on his mom, so they say, "Theresa, we brought that up before, like, you got nursing experience, so, your child, if he's got mental health problems, you should be the first person to notice. You shouldn't be, metaphor, sweeping it under the rug." They get at her and say, "Hey, Carl Kuker, based on your experience in the psychiatric hospital at Gowanda State, did you have an opinion that perhaps Joseph had become a manic depressive?" And she said, "Yes." She explains, "Metic depressive, temperamental, depressed at times and what have you? Did you see him with a temper? No." Hmm. Now, his coworkers even say, "Oh, yeah, we saw him with a temper." You didn't see him with a temper. Is this another lying white woman? I know it's your son and all, but, I mean, really? Whole lot of black mothers would love to have their child, I'm sure Glenn Dunn's mother would love to have her teenage child back. Let's see. Even his parents, they comment on his weight going up and down. Is he eating, is he eating all the cookies? Is he fasting? Uh, let's see, so, yes, now, we get to the coworkers, let's see. Let's see, so, yes, now we get to the coworkers, let's see. All righty, no show, Charles Walker worked with Joe and Ernie Smith at Canisius College. We're still trying to figure out what happened at Canisius College in the autumn of 1996. Something with bigotry and racism, we're still trying to discover. They say, Charles Walker would later recall, I ran down, well, this is when they got the newspaper information, I ran down to the bus stop and waited for Ernie. He got off the bus, and as soon as he saw me, we pointed at each other, we both said, Joey. We just couldn't believe it. We could not believe it was our Joey. I say, watch those possessive adjectives. Now, again, Mr. Fuller says, the most familiar mystery. He goes on to say that three of them had been good friends at Canisius. Ernie and Joe had been particularly tight. Hmm. In addition to Ernie and Charles, there were several black men on the maintenance crew. As Charles recalled, everybody liked Joey, he was crazy, but, I mean, in a fun way, a real jokester, witty, always laughing, just a crazy white boy. Pause right there. In the system of racism, white supremacy, where most of the time, white people don't want anything to do with black people. Now, if that's not your experience, you can correct and what have you, but, hey, context of white supremacy. Most white people didn't want anything to do with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. while he was alive. Most white people didn't want anything to do with President Obama, they didn't vote for him, most white voters either time. He's got a Harvard degree and a white mother. So if most white people don't want anything to do with you, us, why does the crazy white boy want to kick it with us? Nah, I'm cool. And especially the crazy white boy who wants to come hang with the custodial staff. Maybe, maybe, maybe get one more, if we were all, you know, CEOs, executives, and the crazy white boy wanted to come hang with, may, but, I mean, really, like, making us look bad. Back up, man, back up, back up. Don't want you getting your crazy white boy vibes on my suit, man, got my Ferragamos. Back up, back up, got lunch plans. Get you some white friends, you don't need, the crazy white boy shouldn't have to come and hang with the niggers. And we all think he's great, he's so, he's so smart. How many times does that get said in the book? This dude is a high school dropout, man, he is not witty. Now, they continue, now, remember last week, old Ernie, he said, well, we used to fool around, wrestle, sometimes we fool around with the street girls, remember that? That was last, just last week, I said, oh, my God. Super highlight. Now, this week, they say what? Crazy white boy, he was cool with us? He was a lot of fun, we had a good time, what does that mean? We would have to clear the parking lot during snowstorms, and Joey would drive the big plow. We'd go out there and throw snowballs at each other, just doing what guys do. Keep saying all this guy stuff. Homosocial, certainly, all these guys just hanging around and wrestling and joking and pranking and throwing snowballs at each other, man. And, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, whoa, 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 Joey, let's just keep going, throwing snowballs at each other, just doing what guys do. Joey popped pills all the time. Pause right there, now, these are his coworkers. His mother, you are a nurse, you got mental hospital-like experience, you don't know that your child is doing all these drugs, he talked about it before, he was doing cannabis and all this, this is like serious, so he's got mental health problems and he's doing all these drugs, cannabis, we just talked about that causing mental health problems yesterday? Like, come on, Mom. You got some culpability in this, too, man, like, what in the world? Incidentally, they say, we'd go out to his pickup truck, and he'd pop a pill, he'd offer to, he'd offer, he offered some to us, but we said, no, thanks. We were like, you're crazy, Joe. He'd just laugh. If none of the white people want to kick it with me, except the lone exception is the crazy white boy with a gun and a buck knife who pops pills all the time and wants to wrestle and fool around with the black guys, if this is the only white person that wants to kick it with us, maybe we should be suspicious. Because this does not sound like a white person we need to kick it with. In fact, if it was a black person, this does not sound like someone you need to kick it Incidentally, if the black workers at Canisius knew that Joe popped pills all the time and was gun-toting, did the white workers at Canisius educators, did they not know old Joey is pill-popping and gun-toting on the premises? Let's see. I get in a few more and then get to the caller, oh, wait a minute, we get to one of my favorite metaphors, it's right up there with alive and well. So they continue with the black coworker. Charles says, I never detected a prejudiced bone in his body. The three of us were like brothers. We could never wrap our heads around what they were saying about him being this racist killer. It was like, they must be talking about some other dude. Grady Lewis, 2022. I don't know where the racist bone is. If you can find that in the body, is that near your ankle, your esophagus, your spleen? The racist bone. Now, she writes, this is palinero, she says, other than the instances of sleeping on the night shift, the offense that led to his dismissal, Joe had been a great employee. That is a lie. One, you can't be a great employee if you're pill-popping. Two, Matt Greider wrote, hey, Joey should have been fired at the least, but he got in trouble for toting a firearm on the job. Why wasn't that listed? She read this book, it's not like he just did one thing, sleeping on the job repeatedly. Carrying a firearm unauthorized on campus, that's not being a great employee. In fact, that's the sort of conduct we talked about with The Gift of Fear, Gavin DeBecker. He has a whole chapter on workers like Joey, and it's that exact context. We're in a college environment, you are not supposed to have a firearm here, what are you doing? And a buck knife, remember, he brought that up before, too. Said that, oh, old Ernie stole my buck knife, now I got to kill him. What are you doing with a buck knife here, anyway? And a firearm? There, I will pause. See if we get some of the folks who dialed in with commentary. Again, we're not doing tangents and what have you, so commentary on the portion of the book that we have been reading. Let's see, folks who dialed in with a hand up if you have commentary. Let's see, retired firefighter in Florida, do you have commentary on this portion of the reading?
Yes, sir. I was just thinking about the, the part where all of the non-white black people were, were basically complimenting the murderer, the terrorist. And you, you're writing your commentary, the way I factor it in is non-white people who are originally classified as black, due to the system of racist white supremacy, have a, have probably the most severe case of, of, I'm trying to think, what's the name of that syndrome? That, that, that syndrome where the victim actually starts identifying with the person, Stockholm, right? Black, non-white black people have the probably the most severe case of Stockholm syndrome. It is, it is something that I'm almost about to say embedded into our mental functioning. I mean, it was depicted in a, in a movie that I, that I saw, where, where the slave was getting beaten, but because the person who ordered the beating came and sooth his back, the victim basically, you know, it was, it was okay, you know, that sort of thing. And it is some, it really is something that, that we're going to have to work to improve our mental health in that, in that light. There, there is absolutely nothing that non-white people should trust white people on, as long as there's a global system of racist white supremacy. And, and it shouldn't be something that we would be, should be shy about, which a lot of us are shy about it, because we'd be, we would be chastised by another non-white person in a lot of cases. If, if you make some kind of commentary in a conversation, and it's something that is critical against white people, a non-white person would chastise you, you know, and so I think white people understand that. It's not like what I'm saying is secret, not, I mean, white people understand that, and they use that for their favor, like in a court situation, that's very possible. If they say, a, a white terrorist is, you know, of course, have a defense attorney, and they would use, they would use us, you know, in that, in that way, to give this murderer credit, some kind of constructive credit. And that's what I was thinking about in the first reading. Thank you.
Much obliged retired firefighter in Florida. The confusion is substantial with the victims of white supremacy, indeed. Let's see, star six, one for other folks who dialed in, if you have commentary to share on the first portion of the reading, I'll get to some of the folks who, get to some of the rest of the people who wrote in as well, as we get through, let me see. Got confused with my email tab, this, there we go, okay. Other people who wrote in, one of our investors. Greetings, Gus. Another home run for the Buffalo supplementary programming with Dr. Jason Knight earlier this week. Can't say I'm optimistic that he is personally going to do much to increase walkability in predominantly black neighborhoods of Buffalo. I concur, I suppose he would just put the blame on the mayor of Buffalo, Byron Brown, who I don't even think he named, racial showcasing that did happen this week. Chapter 15. Number one, 18 individual lineups, Christopher appeared to be the least anxious. Christopher really seemed unfazed by the whole thing, very polite and real casual about it. Dennis Vako, his impression that Christopher's demeanor was of a cool, calculated individual with cockiness. Christopher had led by any measure of pathetic existence for much of his life. He may have been enjoying the notoriety. True. Number two, two of Paulson's older sisters had been present and said they did know the Christoffers. Paulson hemmed and hawed. Why wouldn't Reagan push Paulson? A man, I'm not buying the excuses given about Paulson being a potential witness at trial. Race soldiers have no problem pushing non-white victims under any circumstance. Anthony Broadwater. Let's see, number three, whether Christopher had an accomplice, the prospect of an accomplice was all the more intriguing because of the whole wide discrepancy between certain witness descriptions of the gunman and the failure of some observers at the lineup. Accomplice or maybe a copycat? Number four, I never detected a prejudiced bone in his body, my favorite. Such a commonly used racial metaphor, whenever I hear it, it sets off alarms, confusion on the part of non-white victims, and deception when used by suspected racists. Number five, gun club member John Hemphill, a black male who told Bob Keeler of Newsday, when I first met him, he seemed like the typical timid kid. As, Newsday, that's, as time went on, he noted that Joe had a temper, he had a short fuse. When Joe had wanted to be gun club president, he said, and was a little upset when Hemphill got the position and said, poor Joey, persecuted by those black males. Matt Greider writes about this incident as well, inciting incidents where even before, we get to the killings and what have you, and even before 1980, where Joey had been angry and consistently angry at black males, mad at the black male because he couldn't be president of the gun club, even fabricating reasons, make up the, Ernie, you stole my buck knife, you know, Ernie, you got me in trouble about having a gun at work. And blah, 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 on and on and on. Let's see, number six, Bobby Groot, the young boy recognized Joe Christopher immediately when he saw him on the TV news. Bobby told his parents about the incident, that the guy they kept showing on TV was the stranger who told him that bricks were for throwing at niggers. So Bobby did tell his parents about the incident at the bus stop, but declined to tell the police. Hmm. That would be, it would seem like a lot of white people would have had information about this dude specifically, and or at minimum, a strange racist white guy that should maybe be questioned. Hope we didn't get that far, we'll have to pause there. We'll pause there and pick up the rest when we get to the second portion of the audio. Let's see, any other notes that I got? First audio segment we need to read. Short fuse, even his obsession with wanting to shoot, like, with perfection, and he would get mad because he shoot, couldn't shoot well, and Mr. Hemphill, the black male, said that was one of the times when he would see some of his rage, and he referred to this as him being gun-happy, I don't know what that means. And that's even interesting, if this person is throwing like reg, tantrums and what have you, temper tantrums, as they call them, because, you know, he can't shoot correctly, or he missed the target, or whatever, the gun jammed, that's not gun-happy, that's not even gun safety, like, they said, I thought they said, hey, Joey was about gun safety, slamming the gun down, that's not gun safety, that's what they said exactly. He would slam the gun down, now, who? I take him gun safety, we had to do that, we went to Florida for the yoga retreat, retired firefighter was there. Where do they teach? Man, you get up there, and you get mad. You missed the target, out of ammunition, or, you know, inflation, so the prices, you know, skyrocket, skyrocketed 500%, you get that firearm, you grab that Ruger, and you slam it on the, where is that taught? That is not gun safety, and that is not gun-happy, whatever that means, that right there, like, whoa, this fella could be a, that right there, imagine being in the armed services, you're all about to do weapons training. This fellow, he got his AR-15 or whatever it is, and he gets frustrated, he comes in, buys lottery ticket, let's see, did I win? Scratching, oh, my God. He grabbed the AR-15, goes to slam it down. And, oh, my God. Can I get another bump? We gotta get another, another platoon, another platoon. I need transfer immediately. Only individuals classified as white. Now, incidentally, I'm gonna pause one more, since this fellow's in the service, hey, how do you clear, like, who exactly is doing the recruiting? This fella is pill-popping and narcotics, high school dropout, all the rest of it, like, whoa, and you say he's crazy? And you say he's crazy. In addition to all the rest of it, who is doing the recruiting and looking at this guy like, yeah, be all you can be. Yeah. We Uncle Sam, we need you on our team right now. Come sign up right over here. Put that reefer down. Let's come over here. Like, what? Uh, let's see. Iri mentioned her, uh, yesterday on our programs, uh, hopefully constructive if she got to hear or cares at all. Uh, Iri in Louisiana, did you have commentary on the first portion of absolute madness?
Uh, good evening. I didn't get to tune in yesterday. I've, I've had a crazy week, but I will definitely check it out. I hope people learn a lot from it and if anything, learn that they, you know, there's so much more to learn. You could think you know something and you don't know to have, especially when it comes to that subject. Um, the question you just posed about how, um, did he get? Oh, okay. Okay.
I finished, my fault, my fault.
So, um, yeah, it's all good. So from what I discerned when I was in boot camp, because there was a similar issue with someone that had, um, moderate delays. And, uh, just retracing my steps of getting to boot camp, you know, you have to basically, when you leave to travel to the, uh, where you're gonna be training initially, you have to go through MEPS, right? I can't remember what it stands for right now, pardon me, but that's where you get like that last little once over and everything and then they stop, you know, swear you in. So if he reported into a MEPS station where they just, they just didn't care, you know, he got through that way and then he probably did a good job faking being, you know, sane during boot camp because I understand from listening to the book that he passed the point of his initial boot camp training. He's actually training for his specialty, which is, um, I think it's, uh, infantry, right? So, um, you know, he got through and now he's at the point where he can't hold, he can't hold the, um, fake position in his mind anymore. It, you know, he wants to act on it and it's probably, it's on his mind all the time, but, you know, if, if they're, if they were able to, it just depends on who, uh, you know, checks you out before you leave for boot camp and if you're able to hold it together, then nobody's gonna really ask any questions. Because I'll, I'll be honest with you, there were people that you knew were stone cold crazy, like killer crazy, but because they hadn't hurt anyone, they stayed in. There were people who were sexually confused that you knew without a doubt, this person is gay. And, um, at the time, the policy was don't ask, don't tell and they stuck to it. So these were women that you knew were probably going out on the weekend and could be seen with other women, um, you know, dating. And I'm saying women particularly because, you know, if it was a man, you couldn't tell, but the women would be doing their thing. You knew it. But they didn't broadcast it, so you got to stay in. The military doesn't really give a hoop on the quality of person that joins. They just want people to join, you know? So that's what I wanted to share about, about that. And, and the other thing about what, uh, I had heard about the, the black people that were hanging with him, you know, I was one of those people at one point in time, very confused. It's easy to give these white people the benefit of the doubt because they like to have a good time with you. So, you know, just hearing that part of, oh, we, we didn't have any problems yet. They didn't have any problems with you. But I also think perhaps he was studying, and I think you said it before, studying and sizing up black men, especially, uh, Ernie. What is it gonna take? If I'm to accost a black man fully, if I have to literally fight him, like, what's the possibility of resistance? So that was like an anthropological survey, I think he was doing to all these black men he was around. Thanks. I need my lunch.
Absolutely. They study the nigra and that's the way to do it. That him, all of it. The stuff with Ernie that they went into detail, that, that was last week, but I missed the exact same thing, exact same thing. And I think Ernie was a part of that group, the black dudes where he said they were, uh, going out throwing snowballs and, uh, playing around and all that stuff. Uh, the absolutely. And not only, I think it's all that. I think that the homo eroticism, I think the, the sexual component too, but absolutely, I'm studying. See, I'm, I'm wrestling with Ernie and getting stronger. Exactly as she just says, if I gotta meet one of them, we're gonna do mano a mano, like they described later with Parler Edwards, Ernest Jones, where the hearts are extracted with these black males. I've already done this. I've grappled. I got an idea, you know, what to do, what moves, how much strength is gonna be required and all the rest of it. Absolutely. I'm studying. They don't even suspect me. In fact, will never suspect me. Years go by and they said, oh, we loved old crazy Joey. We loved him. And that's, that's not just Iri. That's many, 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 many of us hanging out. They said that with Jeffrey Dahmer, who was killing mostly black males. Loved old Jeff. Hanging around with, they said these, some of the exact thing that never called us any bad word. They got a documentary. They got some of the black people that used to live in Wisconsin in the same neighborhood as Jeffrey Dahmer and it got, I mean painfully exact same thing. Black dudes, old Jeff Dahmer, that was my homie. That's my friend. We used to eat together. I mean, that for real, for real. They said, we used to eat together. Old Jeff would go on in his house, hey, come on in Jamal. Made a sandwich for you. Here, so to sit on down. Get a sandwich. I'll get something to drink for you too. And oh my Lord, we didn't ate a sandwich together. I thought it was chicken. Oh God. I mean, that's, that's tons of us. Retired firefighter, he said, uh, Stockholm syndrome, when you do not understand white supremacy racism, what it is, how it works. When you do not understand what it means to be white? Ooh. Catastrophic errors will be made. I didn't say can. Catastrophic errors will be made. We will resume, uh, chapter fifteen, Catherine Pelanero, absolute madness. If you have commentary you didn't get to share, write it down. We should have ample time to continue. Uh, Catherine Massey Book Club at the Cows content, or audio segment two.
Per the order of the court, two psychiatrists examined Joe at the Erie County Holding Center to assess his competency for trial. Dr. John Wadsworth met Joseph for an hour in the presence of another physician and Kevin Dillon. In his report to Judge Green, Dr. Wadsworth wrote that Christopher was unwilling to discuss his recent hospitalizations in the army or the laceration of his penis, although in regard to his injury, he implied that he just wanted to get away from the jail. After his arrest, he believed his food was poisoned. Regarding Christopher's army hospitalizations, he wrote, "It was questioned at the time as to the existence of schizophrenic illness. It is apparently possible that such an illness did exist at that time." Wadsworth noted that Christopher was aware of the charges against him and had a basic understanding of the roles of judge, jury and attorneys. Mental status evaluation revealed a suspicious distant individual who expressed hostility initially, but who eventually seemed to relax enough to answer questions reasonably and even volunteer certain material towards the end, Wadsworth wrote. "He has a sensitive understanding of what questions to answer and what not to answer and was reluctant to approach any material even vaguely related to criminal activity. At times, he stared very suspiciously and hostilely at the examiner. His behavior in the interview situation was generally appropriate, although at other times he was noticed to be spending long periods of time in the cell alone, refusing TV, radio or books. Occasionally, he seemed overly suspicious and at times he didn't seem to understand the questions well and accused me once of attempting to confuse him. There was a certain blantiness of effect and in some areas, he seemed to deny the seriousness of the crimes of which he is accused. There is a definite paranoid quality. Some of this is a litigious quality and some may be a possible psychotic process that exists. His judgment has been fairly good in most situations, although it's difficult to evaluate it completely. There are evidences of extremely poor judgment in a number of situations. At the present time, I find Mr. Christopher to be competent. I do believe that he understands the charges against him and can assist in his own defense. It is possible that his psychological state may prevent him from assisting in his defense in the future, but at the present time, he seems more and more able to do so. Dr. Wadsworth gave a diagnosis of schizoid personality. The second psychiatrist, Dr. George Molnar, did not offer a diagnosis. In a two-page report to the judge, Molnar described Joseph as a slight young man of scant physical vigor and wrote that he was controlled and guarded and selective in his replies, but was otherwise quite cooperative and showed no evident hostility. His answers were deliberate and carefully thought out, giving the impression that the appearance of logic and coherence was maintained with considerable effort. Dr. Molnar found no evidence of delusional thinking, hallucinations or clinical depression. Joseph was correctly oriented to time, person and place. Molnar estimated his intelligence as within the normal to dull normal range. Judgment and insight appeared superficially intact, but it was my impression that his defenses were brittle and that aggressive probing into certain areas would have elicited some pathological material. Noting that Joseph was on no medication and had resumed eating, Dr. Molnar had noticed that the pupils of his eyes were unequal. While this finding may be of little consequence, I think it is essential to conduct a neurological examination, including an EEG and a CAT scan. Molnar questioned Joseph about the purpose of a trial and the roles of judge, jury and attorneys and felt his answers indicated an adequate grasp. In conclusion, Joseph Christopher's behavior and mental and emotional processes are now much better organized and under better control than when he was examined in Georgia. It is my opinion that he is competent to stand trial, capable of instructing counsel and assisting in his defense. On June third, the court thus ruled Christopher competent. Justice William Flynn sealed the psychiatric exams. Dillon and Mahoney were not pleased with either the examinations or the competency ruling, the latter of which could effectively mean that Joseph would be allowed to represent himself at trial. There was no telling when he might change his mind and decide once again that he didn't want any lawyers. Mahoney complained that the psychiatrist had spent very little time with Christopher and, as Mahoney knew well by this time, Joseph's behavior often changed from day to day, if not moment to moment. Despite what Joe had told Dr. Wadsworth about his willingness to work with his attorneys, he was back to refusing all contact with Kevin Dillon. Mahoney's visits with Joe were an exercise in futility. Rather than discussing his case, what Joe mostly wanted to talk about was his persistent belief that his food was being poisoned. On one occasion, he handed Mahoney a sample of his meal and insisted that he have it tested for the presence of poison. The only remotely relevant thing he would say concerning his case ran along the same lines. He had made those incriminating statements, he said, because the army had drugged him. Joseph remained in isolation at the Holding Center under twenty-four hour suicide watch. According to deputies who supervised him night and day, he did nothing but sleep or sit still on his bunk. He often kept the towel over his face and sometimes stuffed toilet paper in his ears. He wanted the TV removed from his cell. He refused to submit to any medical tests, including the EEG and CAT scan that Dr. Molnar had advised as essential. Joe would not explain his refusal to undergo testing, but it was his right to decline. His adamancy on the point could be traced back to his army days and may have indicated wariness or possibly a deep rooted fear of medical equipment. Twice during his brief time in the military, he had complained of a toothache. He'd been sent to the dentist, but balked when they wanted to take an X-ray. The dentist had refused to treat him without benefit of X-rays and Joseph had withdrawn from treatment rather than comply. His sudden aversion to X-rays seemed odd. A full set of dental X-rays had been taken during his military processing at Fort Jackson back in November. As for Joseph's military records, the defense attorneys were not finding the army nearly as helpful to their cause as it had been to the task force. The Provost Marshal had testified before the Second Grand Jury and remained in Buffalo for a time afterward in order to assist investigators, according to a newspaper account. For Dillon and Mahoney, information they requested from the army was trickling in at a slow pace when it came at all. There was plenty to do in the meantime. Dillon and Mahoney appeared in court in June to further argue against public disclosure of the search warrant applications. Justice Kessler had reserved decision on the matter. The defense team faced fervent opposition from attorneys representing the media. Dillon and Mahoney maintained that release of the documents would impair Christopher's right to a fair trial and make the news media arbiters of guilt and innocence rather than the courts. Dillon and Mahoney were not alone in their feelings about harm being done to their client by biased pre-trial publicity. The Buffalo Evening News printed a letter from a reader who complained that the press had already convicted Christopher. Councilman James Pitts had early on voiced his concern that publicity found to be prejudicial could inhibit a conviction. The Columbus Ledger had written critically of all the information that seemed to be leaking from the Buffalo Task Force. The Ledger asked a New York television reporter, who in Buffalo is talking? Who's not, was the reply. Negative portrayals of Christopher ranged from overt to subtle. The press persisted in claiming that Christopher had bragged of being a killer. One black leader had publicly asked rhetorically, but with apparent sincerity, why there was a need for a trial at all, since Christopher was an admitted killer. A local reporter who wrote of the case on a near daily basis consistently referred to Christopher as a high school dropout and repeatedly reminded readers that Christopher's defense was being paid by taxpayers, since his widowed mother's resources had run out. There were also the inevitable instances of erroneous reporting, such as the allegations that Albert Menefee and Roger Adams had been bitten by their attacker and that officials had taken Christopher's dental impressions to compare with the bite marks. While impressions of Joseph's teeth had been made via court order, this material had been gathered, along with his blood and hair samples, so that investigators would have a complete profile, according to Edward Cosgrove. Medical records for Menefee and the autopsy report of Roger Adams indicated no bite marks on either victim, nor had witnesses to either attack, including Albert Menefee himself, reported any biting by the assailant. Larry Little, the man who reported an attack by a knife wielding white man on January second, claimed he had bitten his assailant on the leg. Investigators had discounted Christopher as a suspect. Occasional news accounts would bring up problems with the prosecution's case. Chief among these were the composite drawings. Much touted during the investigation, they had now become lingering specters that haunted the district attorney. Dan Herbeck wrote a lengthy article in which he posed the question, "Could a man who looks so strikingly different from all the composite sketches issued of the killer, be that killer?" Cosgrove responded that the composite was a tool, one of hundreds we employed during this lengthy investigation. It was never intended to be a picture of the person responsible. While he refused to comment directly on the discrepancy regarding Christopher, he said he was very pleased and satisfied with Mr. Hefner's work. Mark Mahoney assured the reporter that the composites definitely will be playing a role in the trial and took the opportunity to point out that eyewitness identification is generally the least reliable. the least reliable form of testimony, adding that such discrepancies could also show the capability of witnesses to pick somebody out of a lineup who looks nothing like the suspect they saw. Horace Hiefner also refused to comment directly on the sketches he'd drawn, but said he'd much prefer to work with one good witness rather than a group of them. Leo Donovan said it wasn't unusual for sketches to bear little or no resemblance to a suspect. Others in the police department believed that Cosgrove had placed too much stock in the sketches and would pay for it in court. One source commented, "The defense is going to cream them on that one." Officials favor insanity plea by Christopher. On June 3rd, the Buffalo Evening News reported that prosecutors wanted Joseph Christopher to enter a mental illness plea that would send him to a psychiatric institution rather than a prison for Buffalos, so-called 22-caliber killings, and possibly related attacks on blacks. According to the article, unnamed senior law enforcement officials on the case viewed such a plea as the best way to resolve the escalating legal proceedings, and wanted to convince Christopher's lawyers of the need for it. The hoped-for prosecution scenario, sources said, would see the twenty-five-year-old Army private admit the crimes but plead not responsible by reason of mental disease. The article noted that the plea would have to be approved by Edward Cosgrove and Manhattan District Attorney Robert Morgenthau. Both declined comment on either the prospects or their hopes for an insanity plea, stating that they had not been approached on the matter by prosecutors. Kevin Dillon told the news, "We don't want a plea. We have not even considered the possibility of a plea. Our intention is to proceed through trial and acquittal." A follow-up story in the next day's paper had Dillon clarifying that "they did not intend to file an insanity defense under the present circumstances." Without elaborating, he said, "As you know, this case changes from day to day." News of a plea had provoked an immediate reaction from black leaders. The Reverend Walter L. Bryan of the Black Leadership Forum said that "any willingness from prosecutors to accept a mental illness plea would be upsetting." Others stated their position in stronger terms, "I think it would be just a further indication of the insensitivity on the part of the district attorney and his staff to the black community," the Reverend Will Brown was quoted, while another called an insanity course "a blatant betrayal of the confidence that the district attorney has requested from our community." Ed Cosgrove stated that he would be the sole judge of any plea negotiation, and said, "There has been no consideration of any plea of any kind relating to mental disease." He assured that Christopher would be fully and firmly prosecuted under the law. A Niagara County grand jury returned an indictment against Christopher on June 29th for the murder of Joseph McCoy. He was arraigned four hours later, transported under heavy guard to appear in court alongside Kevin Dillon, whom he ignored. Joseph entered a plea of not guilty, and said he would represent himself.
Get the hell out of here! Bob Schmidt ran to his front window and looked across Weber Avenue. His wife's uncle, Laverne Becker, stalked toward Mrs. Christopher's front porch, where a reporter stood with microphone in hand, cameraman standing by. "You have no business bothering these people!" Laverne screamed. "Leave these people alone!" Laverne picked up a rock. Bob Schmidt flew out his front door and across the street. Bob managed to grab Laverne's arm as he wound up to hurl the rock at the news crew. "Get out!" Laverne shouted as they scrambled off the porch. "Stay away! You have no damn business being here!" Bob managed to hold Laverne's arm so he couldn't throw the rock. It didn't stop his uncle's mouth, though. He raged at the reporters as they ran to their car. "Red, what are you doing?" Bob pleaded. "These people have no reason to come here." The news folks sped away. Bob's wife, Cheryl, came outside. It took them a while to calm him down. They understood. Laverne felt very protective of Mrs. Christopher and the girls, and the reporters could be relentless, that was for sure. One had barged into the Christopher home through the back door. Others would pound on the front door for minutes. Sometimes they were almost as intimidating as the vandals. For the past two and a half months, life hadn't been the same for anyone in Joe's circle. Zack DeFusco endured his share of harassment. As a police officer and cousin of the accused killer, he was a prime target for reporters. When he declined to comment, a writer for the Courier-Express warned him, "It's not wise to refuse to cooperate with the press." Zack could handle the hassle. He was far more concerned about his Aunt Teresa. He spoke with his superiors in the police department about the firecrackers thrown at her house and threatening phone calls she'd received before changing her number. Officials promised to look into it. Angela Christopher graduated from high school that month. As she sat on stage with her class, the guest speaker went off about Joseph Christopher, referring to him as a monster. After the ceremony, Angela approached the commencement speaker in a hallway. She told him her name and said, "Joe Christopher is my brother. I just wanted to thank you for a memorable graduation." Angela turned, walked out of the building, and never looked back. Not everyone in town thought of Joseph Christopher as a monster, even if he was guilty, or especially not if he was guilty. A guard at the holding center looked in on the forlorn prisoner one day. "Joe," he said, "they should have given you a medal." Joe glanced up, gave a wan smile, and looked back down at the floor. Joseph was arraigned in a Manhattan courtroom on July 20th. Mark Mahoney and Frank Bress, the New York City defense attorney appointed to represent him, were present as Joseph pleaded not guilty to charges of murder, attempted murder, and assault in the first degree. The proceeding lasted only six minutes. The arraignment had originally been scheduled for July 13th, but had to be postponed when commercial airline US Airways refused to fly him, citing their policy of not carrying "people who are known to be dangerous." A charter plane service flew Christopher and Mahoney to and from New York City. Pre-trial hearings began in Buffalo two days later. The week prior, reinforced wire barricades had been erected outside the third-floor courtroom, where the accused 22-caliber killer would have his days in court. A trial date of September 8th had been set. Wade and Huntley hearings would come first. A Wade hearing addresses identification evidence, such as police lineups and issues related to witness IDs of a suspect. A Huntley hearing deals with the admissibility of statements that the prosecution contends were made by a defendant. Following closed-door conferences with prosecutors and defense attorneys, Justice William Flynn ruled that "the pre-trial hearings would be closed to press and public." This decision did not sit well at all with the local media, who employed a battery of attorneys to argue that the hearings should be open to them. As Judge Flynn explained of his ruling, "The hearings would disclose testimony of principal witnesses and much of the evidence to be presented at trial." However, these hearings also will disclose evidence which might never be heard later at trial if the court grants the motion to suppress such evidence. Flynn's decision came as yet another blow to zealous reporters and journalists. Judge Kessler had earlier upheld his own ruling that the search warrant application should remain sealed, calling the document highly prejudicial to Christopher's fair trial rights. Attorneys for the media argued that much of the information that would presumably be presented at the pre-trial hearings had already been broadcast or published. Judge Flynn countered by stating that a lot of what had been disseminated thus far "had come from improper leaks to news media in violation of fair trial and free press principles", adding that the court did not wish to add its own approval to the impropriety. Judge Flynn also issued a gag order on all those involved in the case. Media attorneys made ongoing legal challenges to the closing of the hearing throughout the summer of 1981, twice delaying the proceedings. Judge Flynn met with the attorneys to hear their arguments. Following the meeting, the judge held firm with his decision. He further issued a gag order on them as well. The media took their arguments all the way to the appellate division of State Supreme Court in Rochester and US Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, to no avail. The hearings remained closed. Kevin Dillon and Mark Mahoney spent the months of July, August, and early September waging battle on three major fronts. There was the examination of witnesses and arguments for suppression at the pre-trial hearings. They also had to deal with the reluctance or refusal of prosecutors to turn over investigative material to them without court orders. There were ongoing arguments over what and how much of the mountain of material amassed by the task force investigation should be turned over to the defense, and then, there was their client. Joseph Christopher's dislike, or aversion, or distrust, or whatever it was, of Kevin Dillon had transformed into open hostility and vocal opposition to Dillon that bordered on verbal abuse. As usual, Christopher's behavior could vary from day to day. The only aspect that remained constant was his apparent abhorrence of Dillon. He had also stopped speaking to his mother, and would no longer see her when she came to the holding center to visit him. Though Teresa felt reluctant about putting anything to her son in writing, she wrote to him the weekend before the hearings began. "Dear Joe, because you refused to see me, even if only to be in the same room with me, I have decided to write this letter to you. I pray that you won't refuse to read it. You know, Joe, that I am heartsick over your situation, and I wish I could take some of the pain of it for you, but it seems I can do nothing. I know that you don't want me to talk to you about Kevin Dillon, but I implore you to be civil with him and allow him the courtesy of your cooperation. You do remember that you made a vow before God that you would allow them to defend you? They both believe that they can successfully defend you, but you do yourself a great disservice by your attitude toward Mr. D. I worry so much about this problem that I'm having trouble sleeping and feel like crying all the time. Please, Joe, for the love of God and for my sake, try to resolve this problem." Yesterday, Mark and Kevin sent me a seventy-seven-page copy of the motions they are making in the pre-trial hearing, and that was a shortened version of the full package. They have a very good case to present, if you will help them. Finally, Joe, I have to tell you, although it hurts me to do so, that when I said I was heartsick, I meant that literally. I've been having chest pains lately. I don't know whether it is from fatigue from not sleeping or just from the anxiety over you. Mr. Dillon's presence the day you talked with the psychiatrist did not indicate that he thought you were mentally ill. He was there because the judge ordered him to be there. The reason the psychiatrist exam was ordered in the first place was that it is required by law that every defendant be proved competent to stand trial. You have apparently been judged fully competent. I am sorry to have you spend all this time in custody, but hopefully with the help of the Blessed Mother and the Good Lord, we will all see better days. I feel responsible in a way for all the notoriety brought down on you, because in trying to help you, I wrote letters to people whom I thought would help you, and those letters apparently only made them suspicious of you. For this, I am deeply sorry. I thought I was doing all I could do to help you. Please forgive me? Oh, my love, Mom."
Your Honor, Kevin Dillon addressed the court on the afternoon the hearings began. Prior to commencement of today's proceedings, I have some information that I must impart to the court, and I feel an obligation to do so at this point. In previous discussions with the court, I have indicated Mr. Christopher at various times was reluctant to speak with me, and I have attempted to convey his sentiments to the court on that issue. Now, at the commencement of yesterday's proceedings, I approached Mr. Christopher in an attempt to talk to him, and he again indicated to me, in a quite agitated state, that he did not want me present, and he repeated on three or four occasions, "He requested that I get out of here." After yesterday's proceedings, I informed the court that I was very, very concerned about Mr. Christopher having adequate, competent, full representation in this matter. I had discussed the problem with Mr. Mahoney, and due to the fact that Mr. Christopher was facing a large number of charges in this particular county and the labors involved in his defense, I felt that it would be very, very difficult for one attorney to assume full responsibility for representation at this particular time. Today, just immediately prior to us entering the courtroom, Mr. Christopher again conveyed to me his sentiments that "I get out of here." I now am in a position where, due to the length of our involvement in this case, I have a large amount of material that I have prepared, some of which Mr. Mahoney has only a brief general knowledge due to the division of labor. But this is a problem that has arisen, and I assured Mr. Christopher today that I would bring it to the court's attention. Mark Mahoney told the judge, "I do feel, given the nature of the case, that it's in Mr. Christopher's best interests to have two attorneys involved. I have conveyed that to him, and also told him that I would see to it that his position was noted on the record. I don't know if Mr. Christopher has anything to add." "I don't want to see Mr. Dillon again. Out," Joseph said. "Well," said Judge Flynn, "the court has seen all the work both attorneys have done. There's been an enormous amount of paperwork and a great number of court appearances. It's more work than Mr. Mahoney alone could do, and I think we will have to ask Mr. Mahoney to call on Mr. Dillon for assistance. Do you understand the situation, Mr. Christopher?" "No, sir," Joseph answered. "Do you want to tell us what your own wishes are with respect to Mr. Dillon?" the judge asked. "Have Mr. Mahoney represent me as my full counsel." "Your Honor," Dillon interjected, "perhaps I could suggest, for today's proceedings, I would be willing, in order to satisfy Mr. Christopher and protect his rights under the Sixth Amendment and his rights to have counsel of his own choosing, that I will simply remain in the background, and if Mr. Mahoney does need anything that I do have, I will simply give it to him, and I will not participate in the proceedings or in Mr. Christopher's representation." "All right," Judge Flynn said. "Suppose you step away from the counsel table and let Mr. Mahoney handle the matter entirely, and if you have materials Mr. Mahoney needs, you will furnish them to him." "Your Honor," Joseph said, "I don't wish to have Mr. Dillon in the courtroom at all." "We indicated Mr. Mahoney is your attorney," said Judge Flynn. "As far as Mr. Dillon, the court can determine who is present in the courtroom. You can determine what attorney is to represent you." "I want him to have nothing to do with it." "You have stated your position, and we have honored your position," the judge told him. "Call the first witness."
Alrighty, so we will pick up with the witnesses next Thursday as we move right along through the text. Catherine Massey Book Club at the context of white supremacy, the number seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you would like to participate. The number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you would like to participate. The email, untiljustice@gmail.com. Lost my, uh, mic. There we go. Sorry about that. Enjoying a lovely day, one of the warmest days that we've had in Seattle this year. Absolutely gorgeous. Still on our counter-racist grind. Okay. Okay, the, I will nab, make sure we finish up all our emails, and then we'll get our callers, uh, in my notes as well. Uh, our investor, getting back to where I left off with his notes. Scroll back up. Okay, here we go. Bobby Grott, the young boy, oh, we read that one. Negative portrayals of Christopher ranged from overt to subtle, claiming that Christopher had bragged of being a killer, high school dropout, and repeatedly reminded readers that Christopher's defense was being paid by taxpayers since his widowed mother's resources had run out. There were also the inevitable instances of erroneous reporting, the allegations that Albert Minifee and Roger Adams had been bitten by their attacker. The headlines from the news articles provided by Gus described Christopher as quiet man, good son, loner suspects, uh, good son, loner, suspects friends, shock, puzzlement. These don't seem like a negative portrayal. Those are the exact, uh, headlines, uh, that I read. Uh, you can go see, I think I posted, I think all of those, and that's like separate articles. That's not even one article. That was like one article and then another one. Friends mystified. That was in the New York Times, like, why the public appeal? So it's not like, uh, maybe in Buffalo, they had a few sympathetic portrayals, and then the mainstream reports were all, oh, my God, this racist kid. No, that is not the case at all, not even close. Let's see, number eight. A guard at the holding center looked in on the forlorn prisoner one day. Joe, he said, they should have given you a medal. Joe glanced up, gave a warm smile, and looked back down at the floor. What was the name of this guard? Absolutely, and where did he get the, or she, where did she get this information from? Like, presumably, only two people would know about this. Joey and the guard. And I mean, is someone like bragging about this? Like, man, I was guarding Joe one day, and I told him, like, dude, if it was me, psh, trial, smile, you would get a medal. Let's go get some Buffalo wings. Who, that white anonymity against, we got that twice. The white person who wrote that letter, who said the same thing, but they just took a lot more words to say it, but like, yeah, what about all these raping Negroes? And, oh, my gosh, they've got us around here in fear, and I hope he gets twenty more before you, who was that? Let's get that person identified too, because I think we said back then, like, what if that's the town doctor? Dentist? Prosecuting attorney? Who knows? Number nine. I, and, 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 I forgot, right now, two thousand twenty-two, it was a guard in New York who got in trouble, ma- posting jokes about the shooting at the Tops Grocery Store. Foster, I believe, is his last name. Some things do not change. Now, number nine. I asked him to say the word nigger. Ames answered, I guess, just to see his reaction. Ames, he told him he, oh, whoa, 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 whoa. Oh, we did get that. Uh, Mahoney probes, all right, I will be more specific, said Mahoney, did you tell him that you would ask her if she was willing to engage in sexual activity with him? I told him he wanted to, he, if he wanted to ask her, he could. I wouldn't ask her that. This is just bizarre, difficult to process. Was this his goal? Was this a stunt? Just another confused victim? I guess. Eighteen-year-old Ken Paulson had been interviewed by prosecutors. Kenny's memory was improving all the time. In Reagan's opinion, Kenny had known from the, oh, wait a minute, we didn't get that far. I thought, some of this does sound like the portion we read before, but then it's not. So, didn't get that far, we'll have to pause, more homo eroticism, uh, when we get to next week. So, forget, pretend you didn't hear that last one, we'll save that for next week. Uh, let's see. Notes that I took from the second portion of the audio, I am going to get right to that portion about all of these newspaper articles. Oh, she says, yeah, that's how she says it. The negative portrayals of Christopher. I want to get the exact page so that I make sure I don't miss any important, there we go, yes, 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 yes. Negative portrayals of Christopher ranged from overt to subtle. The press persisted in claiming that Christopher had bragged of being a killer. Now, that's one right there. What, now, this is, I can't even believe how many times, every time that I've said that somebody bragged about doing something, white or non-white, it's been questioned, I faced opposition. So for the third time this year, here we go again, at least with Gus T. So, if Joey Christopher, now, you can say he was drugged or he shouldn't have, but he says, hey, you heard about those killings up in New York? I did that. Is that bragging? I've always been told, say, if, if you did it, that's not bragging. Anyway, we can hear folks' opinion on that. So next, she continues. Uh, a local reporter who wrote of the case on a near-daily basis consistently referred to Christopher as a high school dropout and repeatedly reminded readers that Christopher's defense was being paid by taxpayers since his widowed mother's resources had run out. So, starting with truth, that's what we, and that really was the last one, too. So did he do it? If it's true? Anyway, uh, is this true? That's, you know, the number one metric with everything from a counter racist perspective. So, is he a high school dropout? I thought we already read that. If that's true, I don't, what do you mean, negative portray? I mean, pause right there. Man, you want to talk about negative portrayals, all the different ways that we talked about, uh, Glenn Dunn, fourteen years old, did you know he was a car thief? You know he stole a car? You know he was in a stolen car? And all the, in fact, forget this, Cynthia Wiggins, she got hit by a dump truck. It is, oh, man, teen mother, unwed, teen mother, oh, man, let's not pretend like she was an, she was no angel. That's Cynthia Wiggins. Yeah, I know she got hit by a dump truck, but, you know. Talk about negative portrayals for this guy. Is he a high school dropout? If he is, what are you talking about? That's what they're supposed to do. Glenn Dunn was in a stolen car. Joseph G. Christopher was a high school dropout. Now, the same thing with the taxes. Is that true? The taxpayers are having to foot the bill for this suspected race soldier? I guess you can raise an issue, should we not be reminded that that's the case about what's happening here? Do they not do this with other defendants, individuals who are suspected of crimes and what have you? Do they, do they give a reminder that taxpayers are footing the, uh, bill for the defense, especially if it's going to be like a costly defense? Somebody would have to tell me, because I'm very accustomed, when it's black people, oh, they make sure to let you know. Uh, he missed fifteen days of kindergarten, uh, he got a B, excuse me, got a D on that spelling test in third grade, uh, and she did not complete the tenth grade and all the rest of it. I mean, they will let you know. Mike Brown Jr. and all of that, that's what I'm accustomed to. Maybe you're not supposed to do that for a white person. Uh, let's see. Go back, get any more of my, try to get all the way to the beginning for this section, got too far. Okay. When the second psychiatrist, Dr. George Molnar, didn't offer a diagnosis, he wrote a report, he says that Joey's answers were deliberate and carefully thought out, giving the impression that, giving the impression that the appearance of logic and coherence was maintained with considerable effort. Now, that kind of reminded me of what I read just here. She said, some of these recruits, they come into the service or what have you, and they can kind of pretend that they have some semblance of sanity and that they can conduct themselves, uh, in a, you know, legal, safe manner, for a period of time, they can kind of hold it together, but then they, whoa, whoa, they're, okay, yep, yep, yep. All right, to the stockade, yep, yep, shouldn't have let him in, got to be more careful. Maybe that's what, you know, we had here, he could kind of behave himself for a while. But even with that, if you can behave and be logical for a time, oh, yeah, you're saying, let's roll. Uh, let's see. All of this about the so-called bias preferential treatment, uh, they say, the Buffalo E V News printed a letter from a reader who complained that the press had already convicted Christopher. Uh, I don't know what, like, I've read many, many of the newspaper reports over this time. It's not, it is not any sort of Orenthal James treatment where they got pictures of Joseph G. Christopher all darkened up and shackled and every, it's nothing like that. They don't have any sort of made-for-TV mini-series altogether with some white dude that's going to play Joey Christopher and act out what he did. None of that. And I already told you, it's tons of reports. Even they got reports sympathetic to the white neighbors on Weber, like, oh, my God, Weber's such a pitiful, a peaceful environment, and now, oh, my gosh, all these no-count press buzzards have descended on the beautiful, peaceful white people of Weber, and, oh, they didn't deserve this, and he was such a sweet, that's the reports? It's not, oh, my God, this dump, and, oh, I could see how a killer would be spawned from that. That's not the, that's, I haven't read that. That's not what I've been posting, that's not what I've been sharing. Maybe they got a few of those, but it's tons of very sympathetic portrayals of Teresa and all the white people in this area and Joey himself. Anywho, uh, let's see, the number again, seven-two-zero-seven-one-six-seven-three-hundred, the code five-six-four-nine-four-three-pound. Press star six-one if you have commentary. Uh, let's see, retired firefighter, and/or I read, did you all have, uh, thoughts from the second portion of the reading? Anything else stood out?
Yes, hello?
Yes, ma'am.
I was, I was thinking, um, you know, I, I, I need somebody to explain it to me because I, I practice pro se civil stuff in court, but I don't understand, I guess because there's the insanity plea or the insanity stuff going on, that he has to go through a trial process, but I'm with you, if, I haven't, I, I'm still catching up from last Thursday, but I haven't heard yet that he's been de- declared insane. I, I know I came in late, so if he was, excuse me, but if he hasn't, and he confesses to the stuff, I don't understand why he needs a trial either. I also agree with what you said, um, if a person's able to, um, maintain functionality and not break the law or do something immoral for a certain amount of time, then that implies and is an example or evidence of deliberation. So I agree, he is in fact sane, but I just, I hope someone that knows criminal law can explain this process a little more to see if maybe we're missing something. Um, the other thing, you know, it's a lot of leniency happening. I have heard of black people who were absolutely, um, stunted mentally, uh, not to the point that they were like considered, uh, what used to be called retarded, but you could tell they were not, um, they were not sane, they were insane, and they would, uh, become their own attorney, and it was allowed, and this man, this is so, is so unjust. He's saying, I don't want an attorney, leave me alone, I don't want to be bothered, get him out of here. He's all but, you know, cursing out his counsel and stuff and cussing out the judge, and they're like, well, you need to hang around, you know, help him out a little bit, he don't know what he's doing. So to the point about this is being paid by tax dollars, yes, it's a waste, it's a waste, it's fraudulent, because he said, listen, I'm cool. After that, it should be, all right, you're right, come on, let's get through this. You're going to be your own attorney, there's going to be a breeze, we're going to put you somewhere, either jail or, or Arkham Asylum, one or the other. And the other thing to the point about the taxpayers paying for it, I think I recall in, uh, the book we listened to on OJ, somebody brought up how much the trial cost, um, the county of, uh, LA, they were very, like, people were disgruntled, oh, man, we've had to go through all this, and, you know, it costs a lot of money to prosecute this man, so I, I do believe that happened, so, for there to be, you know, hm, I don't know, just it's a selective outrage, I suppose, about the taxpayers' money or whatever, or something, but, yeah. Don't nobody really care about the taxpayers' money right now, they just trying to give this man, air quote, a fair trial, and I'll mute my line.
Much obliged, I read, got fumbling with my, uh, mute button, um, to, I guess if I can assist with the confusion, so the confession, if you want to use your air quotes again, this is not a confession in the legal sense, uh, meaning he did not, Joey, he did not confess to enforcement officials, like, yes, I did these killings and blah, 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 it's not that sort of confession. Uh, he, and even the confession is being contested by his attorneys. Uh, he confessed while in the stockade, uh, while in Fort Benning, uh, that to the nurse and some other staff while he was being guarded, uh, did you hear about these killings up in New York? I did that. So that's what they're talking about with confession, uh, with regards to a legal standpoint, that would not, uh, count, they would still have to have a trial, even they're, you know, squabbling and saying that that shouldn't even be admissible, he was drugged and blah, 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 and all the rest, so super contested. Um, with regards to the, oh, and then the expense, though? Man, absolutely, like, wow, did white people grouse and complain about the OJ, uh, trial cost? Oh, man, one of the, well, I think it's still the longest trial in the history of the state of California, and I think the most, uh, costly still, well, if it's not the most, it's certainly still up there, but, oh, they grow, and I mean, that was millions and way more than, you know, this trial and all that, even though this trial lasted way longer because of the competency, but that's what's, that's where we're at now, this part, we need to have a competency hearing because he's asking to represent himself, so let's see if he's competent, and then we can proceed. That's what's bogging all of this down, why we can't just get to, uh, the trial, going back and forth about, is he sane? So, yeah, that's why, and the, uh, confession discrepancy, I reckon. Uh, retired firefighter, did you have, uh, commentary on the second portion?
Uh, the only, the only thought that's been going through my head is, uh, there has to be a difference between stupidity and, uh, insanity. And, uh, I certainly don't think that he would qualify for, uh, insanity. Uh, like I heard, uh, you know, uh, in, in, between these murders, uh, there, the characteristic of someone who is considered to be insane, uh, nothing like that, it's really, uh, has been really, uh, uh, factualized. Uh, it's, it's just something that, uh, comes up in order to save that person from during, uh, a lot of time in prison, or it depends on what, what state it is, I guess, on whether or not that person be executed. So, yeah, that, that's, that's the only thought that I had. So, yeah, that, that's, that's the only thought that I had.
Much obliged, uh, retired firefighter in Florida, and I read, absolutely can be very selective about when someone becomes, uh, insane, that sort of thing. Matt Greider, we asked him about this, uh, journalist, he wrote on Joey22, uh, he said, hey, this fellow might have some mental problems? As far as the law goes, confident, same. Let's get these witnesses on the stand and get to prosecuting. Um, for next week's prep, I want to see if I can get, uh, the illustration, if I can get a larger version of it, uh, but in terms of the composites and what have you, uh, I'm going to post, because they have a number of different articles that have like different pictures of Joey and/or different pictures of the composites. It is striking, uh, if it was a black person, because even, uh, the listener who wrote in, she said, some of these composites that they were doing when they were looking for the suspect, she said, these look like a black person, these do not look anything like Joey, they don't even look like a white person. So I do think that that is super important. Uh, I think if these were composites and it was supposed to be a black person, may, I mean, woo, it, it, some of the, and, again, Joey looks very different, depending on when you see him, like, his hair, his weight fluctuates like fifty to sixty pounds, uh, at certain times, and, I mean, he can look very different depending on when you see him, and then the composites are so different, but, wow, I mean, it's, it's almost the equivalent of, they do the composite, and it's like, wow, is that Kevin Hart, the comedian? And then they go and get you the person, and they say, bang, the suspect, ta-da, like, is that Steve Curry? Stephen Curry, sorry? Is that Stephen Curry? Like basketball player, like, Stephen Curry does not look like Kevin Hart. Uh, uh, ooh, no matter how much I squint, Stephen Curry does not look like Kevin Hart. That's about what it is with these coming, I mean, they got a bunch of them. I'm going to see if I can post one of those for the image next week, people can look at that and give their thoughts. Do you, you know, explain this is racism, uh, the composite sketches were lame, this is caveman era, uh, Joey changed, not the same look, accomplice, is there somebody else doing this? Like, how do you try to make sense? Because I mean, wow, they are, wow. Anywho, more on that to come, uh, for next week, we'll resume right at the very end of chapter fifteen. We should be here tomorrow for Neutralizing Workplace Racism, eight PM Eastern, five PM Pacific. If anything, we heard many reasons, do not hang out, fool around, drink with your crazy white coworkers, especially if they are pillpopping, like, run the other way, and if they bring a fire on to work, report it immediately. That is Gavin DeBecker, The Gift of Fear, we've read all about that, that is, he talks about that explicitly, red flag, danger. And then to see it right there, if they had just, well, I guess they did rat him out, but they didn't even fire him, he got fired for sleeping on the job. White privilege, that's what they say? White supremacy racism. Much obliged for folks tuning in, hope it is worthy of your time and energy and helps you better understand what it means to be white, what white supremacy racism is, and Buffalo, New York State history. Sobriety would be best. In addition to being sober, if you're out and about, if someone is being rowdy and hostile, you do not want to be confronting them and having any sort of long verbal exchange, exit. You should be thinking, he, she, they could be armed. If you are not ready to kill and/or die right now, exit. Call enforcement officials as you're departing, if you're in a vehicle, you're sober, buckled up, not on your mobile device, we need all of our attention, and we are trying to minimize contact with race soldiers, badge or no. All of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy, suffering from Stockholm syndrome. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately, no name-calling, no gossiping, no reckless production of offspring. Cow signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.